This is Thursday, January 25th. The Situate Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda that has been duly posted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Favors in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. First up on our agenda tonight is a continued public hearing for the residential cluster special permit for Seaside at Situate. And we have a number of things to cover tonight. I guess before we get started, I would ask-
Just by way introduction, I'm Bill Orinberger, and I'm here with Tolbertos, with Dave Bauer, Dave Buckley, Scott Machelli. We also have Kevin Klein from Stantec, and Aaron Fredetz with us also, and Paul Meller Beto. And just very briefly, since we last met, we did have last week, a meeting with Karen, DPW, to go over a number of the issues, which I saw you got a response memo from the DPW, I think yesterday and today. There's been a file revision of a set of plans, and various and sundry things. We're also going to have, we haven't had a substantive meeting with the Conservation Commission in a while pending the modifications to this. And on February 5th, we're going to meet with them to re-engage and get into the process of getting the order of conditions in shape. And that's it for right now.
Okay. Thank you. I have a number of items I think we want to sort of follow up on and see where we stand on those. I guess where I'd like to start is where we left off on the 21st. It was kind of the last request before we walked out of the room. And I'd like to see, I haven't seen anything from any of you at this point, but I think the last thing we asked as we walked out of the room was to provide sort of a written review of the residential proposal versus the residential cluster bylaw purpose. And I know we said we had a conversation about it with a PowerPoint presentation. We asked that you sort of reduce all of that to writing. And I guess I'm going to ask the question, where are we standing on that?
Well, I'll start with the aspect, because I was not at the last meeting. My mother's deathbed. But-
I appreciate that. I know some of you were, so.
Yeah, Dave Bauer with Tolbertos, I did not take away any such request. I thought we had reminded the board that we submitted everything in writing in a PowerPoint that everybody got. So we would be simply copying and pasting that to a Word document. I thought we were extremely thorough in our answer, item by item. So if there are questions about the content of our answer, we certainly would love to know the questions. Or we can transpose the document to a Word, or a memo, or a letter, if that's what you're requesting. I'm sorry, I didn't take away an action item. I thought we had-
Yeah, that was clearly kind of one of the things we asked as kind of a final takeaway from the-
Sorry about that. Could you clarify what it is that you would like to see different than the-
There's a lot of conversation, and there's what I would consider a summary PowerPoint. But what we asked is that you review the purpose document of the residential cluster zoning requirements, and provide a written response to those. And, you know, that sort of captures all of the contemporaneous conversation that we had during the presentation that you made, and perhaps more so as we've gone along. Because one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're addressing the purpose of the bylaw itself.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. And I know that, I know Ben had some questions that he had already raised, and I think Ben had actually raised this question at the last meeting, too. So I think we want to make sure we get this addressed as part of the overall review.
Okay.
Given that we don't have anything, I don't know that we want to spend, most people aren't prepared to spend some time on it. I have a number of other issues I'd like to address at this point as well.
Well, can I, I just, I would rather not defer the topic, because we have presented all of our answers. We've discussed it at length. We spent more than an hour on that topic. So, you know, we consider it closed. If there's anything else that you have questions about, can we try and bring closure to that right now, tonight?
Well, why don't I turn it to Ben? I think you had some initial review or comments that you would like to address.
Yeah, I guess, well, in the first, first off, that, I mean, this was something that we still haven't worked out. It was actually mentioned in the Towns' peer review, Horsey Witten Group. They deferred to the board as to whether we felt the narrative was adequate. And they, I forget the exact language that they had used, but in the zoning review, they said that perhaps a more detailed narrative could be provided that kind of explained how this iteration of the design is the, kind of, the best solution in terms of hitting all the checks on the purpose, and kind of compare it with previous kind of conceptual design planning that you had done. So I was kind of, as that part of the peer review, I thought about that a lot. And I just had some, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of not super prepared to discuss it right now either, since kind of, I also was under the impression that maybe after last meeting that we were going to receive something additional on that prior to this, but-
Page 43.
Yeah, I think you guys are well aware of the purpose statement in the residential-
Yeah, and I don't mean to be difficult, but I, so you just said something new, which is an analysis that compares our current plan to previous plans? Is that-
I don't remember the exact language. It was, it wasn't new. It was in the peer review letters provided both on November 1st and the summary peer review letter on December 14th.
So it's to evaluate current plan versus previous plans? Is that, I just want to-
Because what Section 510.1 is, compares it with a conventional subdivision. That's what the purpose is.
Right.
It was what their original exercise, we had done when we, in our presentation, we were comparing that.
We had charts and data, and we've talked about length of road, and impervious, and density, and-
Okay. I mean, I guess perhaps maybe the, I see one of our representatives, some of Horsey Witten, this year, perhaps they could speak to a little bit about what, where they were going with that part of the analysis.
I think you're talking about what on my December 14th letter, page 14 and 15, the zoning bylaw review comment. And basically, our reason that we made this statement was that it is explicitly written in the zoning bylaw that, that the purpose, the basic purpose of the application, and we discussed that, I think, on one of the very first meetings, and whether you were satisfied with the basic purpose of this development. So I was kind of like restating the regulation that is your regulation to decide if you're comfortable with the purpose of this property being used for, so being added later. It's not really for us to make a decision for the town and what their intention was for that particular bylaw. So it's in your regulations as a statement. That was, the only reason we brought it up is because it's specifically because state bylaw.
Right. Again-
Where is it referenced in your letter?
It's page 14 of the December 14th letter, at the very bottom, and it goes on page 15.
But if I'm, if I'm wrong, I believe there was a statement in there, though, that discussed kind of suggested that perhaps the analysis could look at-
Well, what I said was, the applicant has stated that narrative was provided to the planning board on August 17th, deciding how the basic purpose of the residential cluster district has been met. And so that was a while ago. I assume there was a letter, something from August 17th that was provided to the board. And so, but I never heard as the reviewer that he agreed with that statement that was made.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing that maybe you're pointing to, Ben, is a recommendation that the applicant provide a clear narrative, including previously vetted conceptual layouts, to illustrate how the purpose of the bylaw has been accomplished. So that was in the December, that was Horsey Witten's recommendation in the December 14th letter. And I think that's what we were getting to in the last, at the last meeting, is, you know, can you, can you provide, can you provide that written analysis, if you will?
Okay. So just so I make sure that we understand what we need. So the August 17th narrative we had, I don't understand. Do you want us to reformat that with the PowerPoint? Because we already had three different narratives that have been presented.
So I can't speak to other members of the board, but new information, at least for me personally, it had, has come to light kind of since that narrative was provided, particularly the extent of the site work, in terms of the amount of tree removal and clear cutting, as well as the number of truck trips and the amount of fill being brought into the site. To me, I have some lingering issues now about whether that kind of hit some of the marks of the purpose. And I just wanted to see kind of, kind of revisit this exercise. And now that the project is really, we have a lot of answers to most of the questions, and things are getting worked out, kind of revisit this and see, are we, you know, is this the best design to kind of follow the purpose of this residential cluster district?
Okay. So I just want to make sure we get it right. So if we take our August 17th narrative, and what we're saying is, when we look at what the current set of evolved plans are, and we tweak that, or have more specificity to define it into the current plan that's before you, is that what we're asking?
I think for me, that's-
Well, we'd like to know, because I want to give you the right thing.
Well, I think Ben's raised the issue, so I'd like to make sure that he's at least clear that, that what he's looking for is going to be accomplished here, so.
Yeah, I, that's, that's the key, is if there are some open issues, let's identify them and give it to them.
I don't think so.
Well, also, at some point, the board is going to have to be doing findings of fact-
And that's going to be the basis of the finding.
And this is going to be the basis of the findings of fact. So we'll be-
Truing up our analysis to where we are.
We'll be going down that when we get into that at the appropriate time.
Right. There's sort of two-
Right.
-issues here, right?
There's two issues.
One is, has new information come to light that affects, sort of, the review against that purpose? Okay? And I think, I think what Ben's raised are two things. The amount of clear cutting on the site, and what was the other thing?
The amount of-
Oh, the fill, the amount of fill coming in. So, sort of, I guess, think about those two things as you put this together. But the second purpose is, as Karen's mentioned-
Understood.
-is that we need to put that together in a, in a finding of fact.
Sure. Because we're going to, when we get all these things, we'll get it. So we'll get that. But we're clear, what, the purpose of the bylaw is to look at this versus conventional subdivision, conventional development. It is not looking at this versus prior iteration of the plans. Are we clear on that?
Uh, yeah, that's-
Yeah, okay. Because I, I want to make sure I didn't, I didn't mishear that. Okay. Yeah, so we'll get this. So in other words, if we were building, well, building a subdivision with 190, 100 houses, what's, what's the delta? That's what you want to know, right?
I think having a baseline to compare it to is fine.
Right, right.
And it would seem to me that it's not a baseline of what different kind of residential cluster districts can you design, right? It's more about, does this meet the purpose of the residential cluster?
Sure. So we'll do-
Bylaw as compared to-
Yeah, so we'll do-
In your view, as compared to conventional subdivision.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is, we're going to take our August 17th, plus the PowerPoint, meld these, and true them up to the current plans that are in front of you. Right?
Right. Yeah. With the, like, and you'll have to adjust some of the rationale probably for how-
Sure.
-we've ended up with this iteration of the-
So I would say you want to specifically address at least these two issues Mr. Barnes has raised.
It would be really helpful if we could just look at these slides very quickly. This is what we presented and submitted to you. And my question very specifically is, what I'm taking-
You're the top one, Steve.
What I'm taking away from you tonight is that we're going to update these slides to true them up to where we are today, addressing the new information of tree clearing and fill import. But this is, this is the information that you were provided, and I just want to make it, I would just want to be very clear that you're not looking for something different or this formatting. But we compared the proposed plan to an alternative conventional single-family layout, and we really spoke to all the different key points, tried to address them one by one.
Did you go through each of the purposes?
Certainly did. Certainly did.
This is verbatim from the purposes.
And I think that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. So just truing this up to today's-
This was done, what time, what was the date?
In August.
So there's been a lot of water over the dam since then, and I think, and Mr. Barnes has pointed out at least two issues that are of concern, I think, to him, so.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, if you want to do slides, that however you feel is the best way to present this, but some sort of narrative and rationalization, some of it's not going to be like easily presented in a table, for instance, you know, to permanently preserve natural topography in wooded areas.
So is that, is that an acceptable narrative? We have, if you just look at it for a second, we-
Yeah.
I mean, is it okay to bulletize, or do you want it in a paragraph? Because you're suggesting that you didn't get it, and I just want to make sure I understand what it is you're looking for. Because that, to me, is a narrative with, with data supporting. And I just want to understand what I should go work on.
I mean, to me, that's, that's acceptable. It's what the content is, not necessarily, you guys choose, for me, however you choose to present it, whether it's a written letter in paragraph form, or kind of a visual cues like a slideshow that you verbally explain it. Either way is okay.
Okay. Great.
You already have this downloaded, don't you, on?
Yeah, we have printouts.
It's already in Dropbox, the entire thing.
Time of the town.
So we'll make printed copies of it.
Okay.
I can, I can resend it. We can resend the August 17th presentation, if that's what the board would like.
Well, I think that basically, what, at least for me, what I see, you know, August 17th, it's been, you know, four months, whatever the delta is. Maybe it's minor, maybe there's not that much. But that delta, since we're now in January, maybe there's a few changes or minor tweaks to it. I think that's what you're asking, correct?
Right.
If I, I want to hear it correctly, too, or understand-
Yeah, that's right. But I think what I'm getting is that some of this delta is going to, it's going to be a kind of qualitative description, I guess, you know, like some, again, preserve natural topography, or encourage a less sprawling form of development. These are hard metrics to really measure and put on a table and bulletize. It's almost like, how, through your integrative design process, did you arrive at your current iteration of the plan in light of these purposes that the town has here for this special zoning district?
I don't know how you can respond to that. I really don't. And the reason I say that, because it's a, it's kind of a truism. The situation you have is, we submitted a set of plans, and any iterations that have happened have been in response to the board's concerns that we've addressed, or the consulting engineers' concerns. So these aren't things that, we were happy with the first iteration of plans. And so it isn't like we've evolved these because we had better ideas. We evolved these in response to being, to get a cooperative approach. And so-
Well, no, I think, I think what we're, I'm going to try to put words in Ben's mouth a little bit, but what, what we're looking at is, you've developed an evaluation, right? You did it a few months ago.
Right.
There's additional information that we've learned, not that we asked you to change, but that we've learned, right? Clearcutting the site, 100, I forget how many, 100, thousands of yards of new fill is coming in, those kinds of things. So I think it's, it's more than reasonable to say, in light of those changes, how does that fit into, how does that now fit into the purpose of the bylaw?
But as it compares to the conventional subdivision plan?
Yeah, that's your benchmark, so I don't know that we have any other benchmark besides that, so.
Yeah, that's it.
But I think that's what we're asking for. You correct me if I haven't-
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
So, so in essence, the two points you have, Ben, is so you'd like to see some data on if we had a conventional subdivision versus this, what the delta in the fill is?
I would certainly think that would be a piece of it, right?
Well, we'd like to know what it all is, because I don't want to be at the next meeting saying, we forgot four items. Because I'm, I'm still, I'm still not, I'm still not clear on what it is we're doing.
Does anybody have any other items that you want them to address as kind of a revision to this, at this point?
No. I think we just updated to where we are, what's transpired since August.
Okay. So you'll have to look at the whole document, if something's changed in there, since you presented it.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we, we understand that.
Just an example of it-
Share her, or Ben, or Patty. Any other issues we should put on the table at this point?
So as, I think as an example, say, the additional waterfall park that we, we added.
The what?
Business park.
Okay. You had a-
No, no. Excuse me a second. We're comparing, we're updating this completed-
This is the purpose document.
We're updating the purpose document to bring it current to where we are today with whatever changes have occurred, and new information that has arisen, right? But the analysis is to compare the purpose, what we've achieved here compared to a conventional subdivision plan. We're not talking about the fact that we added five parking spots. So for example, the tree clearing analysis would say that the conventional plan would clear substantially the same amount of trees.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I, so I'm just giving you an example of the answer on tree clearing would be a conventional plan such as this with this lot size would be essentially the same tree clearing. That would be our answer to that.
That has to be evaluated in light of the purpose, right? And the purpose, one of the purposes, right, being, is to encourage a more efficient, a more efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features. So how, how is that working? So start with the purpose, and update it based on that, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, because it's not, it's not more in harmony with the natural resources if you're clearing the same amount of trees. It's the same.
Understood.
No, but the difference is, you have open space.
Yeah, we've already, we've already spoken.
I'm not, I'm not trying to get into the details. I'm just saying, tie it to the purpose, right? Don't tie it to just, well, one would be the same as the other. Because the purpose is a broader purpose, a more expansive purpose than a conventional subdivision. That, that's all I'm saying.
And that's why I brought up tree clearing, because the, the tree clearing unto itself doesn't speak to the purpose. It's about, it's about this plan, and how this plan speaks to the purpose, and how it compares to the conventional subdivision. I think we understand each other.
Okay.
Well, and I wanted to, at least reading through this, I was just thinking of where we could maybe do one example. Like it says here, to provide an efficient procedure to ensure appropriate high-quality design and site planning. Well, you know, you've addressed a lot of things along the way since August, right? The design review committee, all the information that was in the last meeting. So the fact of, you know, we've, I don't know how to word this, but, you know, Tolbertos feels that we've ensured appropriate high-quality design by responding to the design review committee, and making these changes, and having the upgraded garage doors, and the, you know, the fence separating the garage, or, I don't know if it needs to be that specific, but I mean, you've done a lot of reaction since August. And I think that's what I'm hearing, is you want those kind of specifics.
Well, I think that's, that's our objective, is to meet the purpose of the bylaw in terms of doing a special permit, so.
And I was just trying to show, like, one, in my mind, one example of that where you're, at least I feel, you've met one of the conditions that's outlined here in the paragraph, right? And how you've responded to that in a different way since August, in a positive way. So that's, am I wrong in that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly, what I hear you say, Ben. So that, so for instance, that was an example that I could use as an architect for design. But then there's also the reaction, or the changes that you've made based on topography, and fill, and so forth. So I would think that maybe another example similar to that.
Okay.
Is that reasonable, or am I off base?
I, I think that makes sense for that, yeah, for that particular point up here, but yeah, I, I get, I-
One of the, excuse me, Steve. One of the slides that you had, had a comparison of revenue between the, nope, keep going. Right there. To enhance neighborhoods in which they occur and the creation of affordable housing. That's part of the purpose, but there is no affordable housing in this project, is there?
Depends how you define affordable housing. If you're talking about affordable housing as defined by the state, no, we don't have affordable units in this community, no.
I think that was, you know, I'm betting, and we can go back and check, but I'm betting that was the purpose of the statement in bylaw, was affordable housing was the conventional definition, the state definition of the report.
But, but just, because, again, I want to come back here again. Purposes is the preamble to the bylaw. Section 510.7 is the litmus test, not the purposes. So I just want to make sure we're all clear. 510.7, these are the findings that, granting a special permit is consistent with laws including this, but the project is in harmony purposes with this bylaw, and the requirements of mass generalized that will not be a great eventual interfect. They tick off, those are the findings that are required statutorily. That is different from what the purposes is. In statutory construction, is purposes of a bylaw are a preamble in generalities. The findings that are required for a permit are the legal requirements.
Yeah, and I don't see anything different said here. It says, in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw, right?
The bylaw, the bylaw is the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, well.
I, my sense is we belabored this enough. If you feel like you don't have enough information.
Oh, we have plenty. We thought we already had all the information we needed. That's, this is why, I just want to make sure that we measure twice and cut once, that's all.
Right.
Well, and again, I just think-
Do you need anything else at this point?
Huh?
Do you need anything else at this point, then?
No, I've, I've heard it.
Want to measure again?
Huh?
I think we've appropriated, we're sort of defined what we're looking for. It is sort of saying, it's not static, right? The project has evolved. Our knowledge of the project has evolved as we've gone along. And we're asking you to sort of update your assessment against the purpose. Is that good? Okay. Let's move on. We have a lot of other things to cover. I'd like to cover where we are on both the sewer and the water issues. I heard you say you had a meeting, and you was in a meeting with the DPW about both of these issues. So I'd like to kind of figure out where we are.
My understanding is that the Towns' consulting engineers have issued letters on both that are in concurrence, that other than getting the specific things that you got, the response from the DPW today, that they, the water and sewer issues are inadequately addressed, at least in, you know, the consulting engineers are high for that purpose. And as I said to Karen earlier today, when we received, post-meeting, this January 25th memorandum, we reviewed this, and we're in concurrence and stipulate to all of it, other than four specific things for discussion. So we don't have to discuss the whole thing unless the board wants to, of which Karen-
Let's, let's get this memorandum so we're all on the same.
It's the January 23rd one from DPW.
DPW?
Everybody, we put a copy in your packets.
Is that this one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the numbers, the numbers, where you see number four references, the Horsey Witten comment, which, and it, there's some reference also to the Weston and Sampson stuff, but that's a little bit looser.
So I know we got sort of final versions of both of the sewer system review and the water system review letters today?
Yes, we received them late, 4:23 this afternoon. And like Mr. Orinberger said, I mean, essentially, the two reports met the scope of what was asked for the studies. It doesn't go, they both say that there's capacity for the development. It doesn't address- It doesn't address the larger concerns of the, a separate study that the planning board has previously talked about, but it has met the requirements for what you have asked for the project.
And so where do we, so I see a list of recommendations. Let's start with the sewer letter. Let's see a list of recommendations and we're saying that all these recommendations provided by Weston and Sampson have been integrated into the project?
They have been integrated or addressed in the DPW memo as an agreement between the town and Toll Brothers. Some of them are a little bit different. And Toll Brothers is in agreement with the sewer issues, except Bill may raise one slight issue on that. I mean, they've agreed that certain manholes are going to be flushed and raised. They've agreed to leave the sewer as designed in Ermine Street versus the Weston and Sampson recommendation because the town feels, and Toll Brothers feels it's a better solution because of how the sewer is coming into Ermine Street from the school. And so in the meeting that we had, we discussed every one of these issues from the Weston and Sampson memo and came to agreement in some form.
And that's reflected in this?
That's right, except for Mr. Orenberger is going to highlight some issues that were not fully discussed at the meeting.
Okay. I guess, I'm a little confused by the DPW letter because it says four, five, and six.
Right, and that refers, that refers back to, he was referring back to the Horstley-Witten memo, the December 14th Horstley-Witten letter. He's trying to check off action items from Horstley-Witten, which said, you know, basically you need to address all these items. So things have been addressed and that's how they're identified in this memo.
Okay. And they cross-checked with Weston and Sampson's report?
Yes, right.
Okay. All right, well, maybe if we could just belabor it just for a few minutes, can we just walk through, I'm looking at the Weston and Sampson report, which is a final letter we got. It looks like there are four bullet point recommendations from Weston and Sampson. And can we just walk through them or are they each addressed?
They are addressed.
So the first one is that we're going to do a light cleaning and a CCTV inspection of existing sewer lines?
That's correct.
And that's good?
And that's agreed to, hopefully. DPW recommends to be done ideally during the wet season. Toll Brothers didn't seem to have a problem with that last week.
And then the second one is to move the Ermine Street sewer connection?
DPW does not agree with that.
Okay. So what's the, is there an alternative or is it just, we're not doing it?
We're leaving it as it's designed.
Okay.
We're leaving it as designed because it's a better, it's a, DPW feels it's a better solution for where the manhole comes in Ermine so that we're, because of the sewer for the school.
Okay, so there's no other, like, alternative solution to this? It's either use it or do something?
It's one manhole or another manhole. And DPW does not want to be going down, the one manhole is very, very deep in the ground. And so they feel that the solution that in Ermine Street is the better solution for the town.
Okay. So not to move, right? So we're not accepting essentially the Weston and Sampson recommendations?
Right, we're going with the, right.
How about move the proposed sewer into the existing roadway on Halloway Road?
We are doing, it's going to be moved from the backyards of the Form A lots, right now it shows on the back, and it's going to be moved into the front yard lot, into the front yards. It's not exactly going to be moved into the right-of-way, but everyone was in agreement at the meeting that by moving it up front, it's a better solution to the issue.
Okay.
And that's in numbers, that's in the number six in the DPW memo, the last item's in number six.
Okay. And then provide watertight and raise manholes?
That's been addressed in, that's been addressed.
So we're going to do that?
Whatever.
Whatever the DPW said?
Yeah, whatever the DPW said is what has been agreed to.
I'm sorry to walk through this, but we haven't seen these documents till now.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
For those changes, or my, your line here, some of them might be notes, are those things that you want to see on the drawings? And I think that the sewer easement change to the front is definitely something that shows on the drawings. But the watertight manholes, is that?
Yes, everything is shown on the drawings. It might just, it might just be a note that it's a watertight manhole, but basically all these changes need to be shown on the drawings.
So they'll be part of the drawing changes to those notes? Just so I know that you might actually look for them.
No, look for them, okay. And so what was the other thing on the sewer you were going to address?
As I said, as everything in the Weston Sampson report stands, other than these are the only deviations from it. So the only comment, and Karen already clarified this under number five, just an additional sentence, what was agreed to is if the camera work shows that there are breaks in the line, that it's the town is going to address that in their ionized, not the Toll Brothers. Can you discuss that with us?
I discussed this afternoon with DPW and DPW concurs. That was the agreement and that's what's going, that's what's going to happen.
These are all town sewer lines?
Yes, they are town sewer lines. But by identifying the problem, if there is a repair, the town will do it.
Then the second question, which, under the second page of this January 23rd letter, under the water system review is the very last.
So we're done with the sewer?
Yeah.
Okay.
The very last, it says looping the water main to road F. There was a new proposition here which was not discussed or reviewed with the DPW. And I think I'll let Scott or Kevin talk to it, just a brief iteration of what our suggestions was, because I think Karen said when this, they want to know if there's another way to handle this. And if the DPW concurs with this, then we go from there. Because this was an unresolved issue, Karen, at the meeting. Yes?
If this is an open issue, are all the other bullet items in the Weston Sampson recommendation agreed to?
No, I thought, I thought road G to row F, wasn't that the one down the bottom? I thought that that one was okay.
No, road F is that little, why don't you guys get into this? Road F is the little spur in what the discussion was.
Bill, can I stop you there for a second? Just, I'm trying to distract you from this. Is this the, you're saying this is the only issue?
There's only four questions. Everything else in this report is acceptable.
Okay. And so all these bullet items that Weston and Sampson has recommended, add one hydrant between the clubhouse and unit four, move the last hydrant, move the hydrant near Ermine Street, all those are, I got into all of those, right?
Those are addressed and there will be a separate memo coming out into, there'll be a separate memo coming out from either the fire department or DPW. We met with the fire department yesterday and there's going to be, based on my notes, we want to add a hydrant near unit 45, add a hydrant between the clubhouse and unit four, relocate the hydrant closer to unit 91. DPW is looking at all the gate valves. Point five is handled in the DPW memo. Point six is addressed in the DPW memo.
Okay.
So.
So repositioning the number of line gate valves is being done, not by the opponent, but by the DPW?
They're just, I mean, it's been discussed and they're just, verifying the drawings are as they've asked them to be. Make sure that you can't get more than 16 units, you know, with the gates.
Yeah, we just want to make sure Al Elliott deferred to the deputy fire chief to-
And he deferred yesterday that Sean McCarthy in DPW is going to actually, actually look at every one of those gate valves.
Okay.
But Al Elliott just wanted those.
So that means the loop, the main, no, consider looping the end of road G is the open issue? And/or loop the main in the sixth avenue? Which ones of these are open issues?
The only open issue is at the bottom of page two on this 23rd memo that starts with the words in lieu of.
On the DPW. On the bottom of page two. So in lieu of looping the water main to road F?
Perhaps you could show them where road F is, just, I mean, because that might clarify the situation.
Sir, I'm just going to point that answer.
Right now, that's the only dead-end section of water main on the project. And when I reviewed this this afternoon in a meeting with DPW, DPW maintains that looping has never been put off the table. So they maintain that they would like to see one possible solution, because that's about a 350-foot road, is to replace 350 feet, install 350 feet of ductile iron pipe in Ermine Road, unless the applicant has a different alternative solution. But looping, they never took looping off the table. That's the only section that's not looped.
I thought we had talked about this.
We already did.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And I thought that you had come up with some type of a solution to loop it.
Yeah, I thought so too, actually.
Yeah, I thought so.
It was never accepted by DPW.
Oh, well.
The solution was is we're looping it back and then the DPW said that they didn't.
Yeah, the history behind it was the water department letter going back a couple months ago said they wanted all dead ends looped. We then met with Weston and Sampson and talked to them about that section. And they said, "That is a landlocked process. We have nowhere to loop it like we did the others. We can't bring it back up to a road other than kind of loop it back on itself." Weston and Sampson was not in favor of that. They said they were going to put it in their letter, they never did. So come to the meeting we had last week, we said, "Look, you know, we're, by extending the water main up in that direction, right now Ermine Street is like an 800-foot dead end. We're actually eliminating a very long dead end that you already have. Can we just leave the 350-foot section of new dead end there as a hydrant again?" So that's the way we left, there was no concurrence coming out of the meeting last week. And so the information in the DPW letter that we're seeing, that we just got this week was totally new about replacing a section of water main in Ermine. It was just new, pointless. It was never discussed last week.
How does that, how does replacing a section?
How does it help?
It doesn't help.
It doesn't help.
It doesn't eliminate that dead end, it's still a dead end.
So there's no difference.
So why aren't we trying to find a solution to looping it? Why aren't we trying to loop it?
Or why can't you connect to Ermine? That's just not a possibility?
It's connected to Ermine.
It is.
Oh, it is connected, okay. Oh, it's coming in from that way, okay.
So the desire-
The idea was can you run it back out to another line somewhere so it loops around, right? Like all the others you do.
The only alternative was to loop it back on itself. Weston Sampson said that they didn't, they didn't think looping back on itself for its purpose didn't really serve any purpose. So what's happening here is you are improving the entire Ermine Road by doing this. And the solution that's here does nothing, at least in our engineers' opinions, to help in any manner whatsoever.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't.
I can see that. Actually, now what's happened is Ermine is looped.
Correct.
That it hadn't been.
Yes.
So if you replace that pipe, it's meaningless.
Meaningless, exactly.
Totally.
Well, except that the Ermine pipe is probably falling apart.
Well, they're supposed to replace those with the town anyway.
Right.
That's on the list.
Oh.
Does looping the Ermine pipe affect the performance of the pipeline itself? Do we have anybody from DPW here?
No, but DPW clearly stated this afternoon that, Mr. Masali is correct, there was no resolution to the solution, to this last week. And so as a result of this meeting, DP, I mean, DPW didn't agree with Weston Sampson that looping it on itself would be a great thing. So instead of having a looped water main, the alternative, in their opinion, is to, for the distance of about 350 feet, replace the line in Ermine Street and that would make up for it.
Can I speak candidly here?
Just please, one minute, because I want to get to the bottom of what our DPW is asking. How does that present a solution? Do they articulate that or do we need to?
No, they didn't articulate. They were just adamant that looping, the looping discussion never, never was resolved.
We hear that.
And that this, that this is their, that this is their solution to this one section of dead-end pipe. So.
I tend to agree with Ann. I don't see how that's a solution. So unless they're prepared to come in and talk to us about it.
You know what the solution is? The town doesn't have to replace that water main. That's what it's all about.
Right.
They want Toll Brothers to replace it rather than they having to do it themselves. That's what it's all about.
DPW has traditionally taken the position that looping it back on itself doesn't give you any value.
Right.
And so that's-
But they've also taken the position that water main should be looped, right? So we're in this position of how do we solve this problem?
Well, we're in this position and so other developers have had to loop it back on themselves. And so by asking them to replace a section in Ermine, it equivalent, comes to some type of equivalent cost. So therefore-
That's not what we're trying to solve here.
But this is, I, don't shoot the messenger.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand. Because maybe there's some performance issue if it's looped as opposed to not looped, but-
But they have asked if the applicant would like to come up with another alternative. DPW is willing to listen to another alternative.
You guys are on the-
We're not interested in horse trading on this issue. You took the words out of my mouth. This is, there's such a bigger picture here. So many other things. We're bringing benefit and value. We feel horse trading like this is not appropriate on this issue.
When it resolves, nothing.
Exactly.
We would rather you address the primary issue here, which is, is there a way to fix this looping issue, right? You're on.
And the peer review consultant, we've all analyzed it and the conclusion is agreed on, which is it just doesn't make sense to loop it back. We have a hydrant at the end to flush it and we've done the best that can be done with the situation. That's where we are.
And plus, you already looped all of Ermine by doing-
Which is a major.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Karen, we should go back to DPW and give them an opportunity to educate us if there's such a thing to be educated on.
I will.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to point out on this?
No, not on that. I'll get to, there's just two other questions.
Okay.
Actually, one more.
Which one are we looking at?
Two. Were there three things, just three things or four things? Three, yeah. Just on the last, there was a discussion on the last page, the section, in other words, to be able to use the HDPE pipe versus the reinforced concrete. And the back and forth in the DPW meeting was, and this is kind of gets to the root of it, was, yeah, the back and forth of it is this is permanently a restricted private development, of which the town is never going to take any responsibility for, the homeowners association is. And I'll let Kevin speak to this. He, I believe it's an industry standard. And actually, one of the discussions was actually, a little bit counterintuitively, is by having this, it's another point to the town if someone, you know, errantly asks the town chief, "Can you take this?" One of the answers is, no. The, amongst 15 other things is the standard of the, you know, the HP, HDPE. But you wanted to ask a question, didn't you? Want to ask Jen a question about that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, our experience right now is that HDPE-
Yeah, I mean, you know, our experience right now is that HDPE is kind of the industry standard. We haven't, on any projects that we've done at all, have used RCP that I'm aware of. And I, you know, was going to ask if Janet's seen kind of that same, that same industry standard. Most projects are now being constructed with HDPE pipe as opposed to concrete.
You're up.
I have been designing with HDPE pipe for 20 years now. It's lighter, it's easier to use. But I have had multiple conversations with contractors, and sometimes they don't like them because they break, they can break if a heavy machine bangs them down. But they're light and they go in and they have ample, you know, for cover, it's working well for a cover purpose. Sometimes, you know, a flare in, that's slightly odd. Sometimes things don't fit exactly the same way if you have different types of pipes connecting to each other. But I have talked to many towns, but some towns are very insistent about using the RCP. But they are heavy and they're harder to maneuver around, and they definitely need bigger equipment to move them. They're not just two guys, the family, the grand, the whole back over. But I have not heard any complaints that these, really, that the HDP pipe is not working.
I'm not sure I can, you know, read that one. I think maybe I...
Spent the better part of one evening listening to the advantages of one over the other.
And?
And the answer, when we got all finished, was the fact that I'm the DPW and I prefer each to not to use plastic pipe. That was where we got to after...
But those are in roads the DPW has to maintain, right?
Agreed.
Right, and this is not that situation.
So if something happens to the pipe...
Yeah.
Then it's up to the homeowners' association to hire someone to come in, dig up the private road, fix it, and go about their merry business.
That's right, like everything else within the development.
And one of the things that would, that occurs to me with the PVC pipe...
This is storm drain pipe, so if it's broken, if it's broken, then when we have storms, that means the storm drainage system is not working, right? So then that leads to the potential of, you know...
A butters.
A butters being flooded out and all that kind of stuff, so...
There's no evidence that it breaks. There's no evidence that it doesn't perform. Janet just spoke to it. So I feel like we're in the conversation of copper versus PEX plumbing, you know? We all grew up on copper. It makes us more comfortable, but every plumber is using PEX. This is, every site contractor is working with this material. It's, again, we, we're developing thousands of homes in Massachusetts, and it's all we work with.
Okay.
It, it performs.
So during the meeting, it was stated several times that the DPW, the town engineer would go back and check with the DPW supervisor. It was stated several times. So nothing was committed to in the meeting. And this is the result of after the meeting, and he has, the supervisor recommends the RCP pipe.
Recommends or is requiring? There's a difference. Requires, right?
No, he's...
No, if you read the memo, right.
Not recommend HDPE and reinforced concrete. Okay, we've, I think we've heard all we're going to hear on that. I would say that if they want to educate us about the pipe replacement on Ermine, they can educate us about HDPE at the same time. Anything else on this memo? So what's the other waiver? Oh, so you're okay with being responsible for the Belgian block out at the entrance to the, okay.
Yeah, I did have one question on the Belgian block. Can we revise the detail to make sure there's gravel under the Belgian block? To have some gravel under the concrete? Thank you.
Just to elaborate on the condominium, the, the budget includes a reserve component that's backed by a reserve study. So we hire a professional engineering firm to analyze the long-term maintenance and replacement of infrastructure, roof, siding, clubhouse maintenance, all of those things. And there's a reserve component in the budget that assumes these types of things, long-term, you know, road repavement, maintaining basins, things like that.
Yeah, I'm assuming that'll be addressed in, and is addressed in homeowners' association document or...
Well, it's addressed in the documents, but it doesn't necessarily specify the best practice for budgeting. So there's a little bit of wiggle room there. And we, we have learned, in some cases the hard way, that to hire a firm that really specializes in, in doing the reserve analysis is, is the way to go. Because we've had, we've had some budgets where the guidance we've gotten does eight or nine percent reserve, and the studies, the more recent studies we've done have driven that number up. And so I'm just giving you the educate, the awareness that we're using an outside third-party to do the reserve analysis.
Okay. Janet, did you have anything else on water or sewer?
Not water or sewer.
Okay. Well, it sounded like you had something else, so why don't we hear, hear from you now?
Only a couple of items that, I just want to make sure that when I'm looking through the final plan set, whether items that I may have suggested could be in condition, do you want to see on the plans, such as noted that the erosion control, the stockpile should be outside of the 100-foot buffer? And there's a note on the drawings, but the actual stockpile has shifted. So is that something, you know, you would expect that stockpile line to actually shift outside the 100-foot buffer on the plan? Or is a note on the plan that says that they have to put the stockpiles on? I don't want any of that.
Right.
I, I think that we would actually like to see it moved on the plan, and I'm sure that conservation...
Any discrepancies.
I think conservation is going to want to see it, because, I mean, conservation is going to be having, like Mr. Orenberg who said, their hearings. And hopefully, we can delay one final set to get all the incorporations in it until after conservation has had their input, and so we only get one more final set of drawings.
That we can record, right?
Um...
Assuming they're going to be recorded.
Oh, they will be recorded, yes.
Okay.
So on that note, just a couple of things that I noted, like the change on the erosion control plans that will be being submitted to the conservation commission as well, is that, so the stockpile's still being pulled outside the 100-foot buffer. Extra erosion controls within the, within areas that are within 50 feet of the buffer. And the construction entrance, as shown, is 50 feet long and three inches deep, but maybe is even longer and deeper for the size of the development. And any, obviously, any other comments from the conservation commission? And the construction sequence has been listed out, there's a number of steps now listed in the construction sequence, but it's not really clear about when phase two might come into that, and whether, I think we talked about it the last meeting, if, you know, the houses are selling, maybe they're going to write into phase two, but I don't know. If the, there's, there's nothing that actually says, okay, now phase two can start, now the clearing, which I think the biggest part is the clearing of the trees on phase two. So I don't know, is the board wants them to come back and say, okay, now we're doing great, we want to clear the trees on phase two, and we're going to start that part? Do you want it written somewhere in some document that how phase two happens and at what stage so that, and really, the clearing of the trees becomes the initial, beginning of phase two, and how that should look?
I think that's a perfect segue into the next item that the board was going to talk about anyways, which is the construction sequencing. And the construction sequencing probably needs to be a little bit more specific with regards to phase one and phase two. So I'll let you take it, Steve.
Well, I, I think, I think we had this conversation last time, right? Which is, we, we now have sort of an understanding of your phase one and phase two. I'm not saying it's a perfect understanding, but the idea was phase one could be built and phase two could never be built, right? That's a possibility, it sounds like. And so we wanted to isolate phase one from phase two to the extent that, you know, as, as Janet suggested, we're not clearing all the trees, and phase two's never going to be built, right? So phase one sounds like it needs to stand on its own. And the question sort of that we come to is, will phase one stand by itself?
Why does it have to stand on its own? That's a new concept to me.
You mentioned it in the last meeting. Oh, you weren't here, okay? But it was mentioned in the last meeting that that's how you were planning to do the phases. And so if that is, and, you know, it makes sense, right? That you may not get to building phase two for quite some time, you know, economic conditions or whatever they are. And we don't want to have a big cleared field with, you know, with no construction, no, no end line, mine for building anything. So I think what you suggested, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what you suggested is that phase one should stand by itself, and phase two would be phase two. And so I guess I'm asking the question is, does phase one stand by itself?
From a construction standpoint, in terms of managing construction and sediment and drainage, it, it stands by itself without a doubt.
From an operation standpoint?
From an operational standpoint, and...
Suppose you built phase one, and you said, "Well, the times are not right right now to build phase two," right? "We're going to wait three years, or five years, or whatever it is." So will phase one itself function as designed by itself?
The idea is that phase one can be occupied and operate as a community and function with regards to drainage, sewer, water on its own, while phase two, if it does lag behind, yes, it can operate standalone. And we approach that not only just in terms of managing the market, but it's also, we're just accustomed to that as best practice, that you and we all don't want a site to be completely torn open, and then potentially phase two is half-baked, and, and then something changes. So it's trying to be careful. And typically, the way that we would bond a project would be that we would have a surety for phase one, and we would really not be authorized to start phase two. And before, once we saw that moment in time where, okay, we really think we want to start going, we would come before you and, and then set the bond amount for phase two and get that approval, and then be able to get into phase two.
Okay. Do you have phase one and phase two drawing you can pop up here?
There's, there's a phase one on phase two on the drawing. There's also a construction sequence, which I've copied and given to all you in your folders as well. I provided the construction sequence that occurs right on page three of the drawings. And what I think we're trying to get at is the construction sequencing needs to incorporate the phase one and phase two in it, which it does not.
I'm going to need an E-size drawing, I can't...
Phil. This folded sheet of paper in there?
Again?
The folded sheet of paper in there?
Yeah.
It's got the whole construction sequencing on it. That's got, that's got the general construction sequencing.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the intent of the general construction sequence was that, for the most part, all of these tasks really apply to both phases. Maybe not every single one, such as demolition and stuff like that, but most of the other tasks, when you start phase two, you're basically going back to the, back to the top and doing those same items. So if you ask me to break it out, phase one, phase two, I'm really taking a lot of those same sequences and really just saying, okay, this is the construction sequence of the phase two. And as we discussed, you know, phase two is dependent upon how the market is. Really, phase two could start anywhere from, you know, somewhere in the middle of this sequence, or it could be at the end. You could finish a lot of these items in phase one before you were starting phase two. So a lot of the sequence isn't, isn't any different. The tasks are the same, you can start each phase.
I think we understand that, but I think that what you need to clarify is that the tree, I mean, I understand it's going to be the same thing, though. Phase one could be a standalone phase, and the trees are not going to be cleared for phase two until some point further down the line. And maybe it is, like Mr. Bauer just said, you need to come back to the planning board after X percent is done and try to say that we want to move into phase two.
Yeah, but it almost seemed you could put a little, a couple of columns here that says this applies to phase one, this applies to phase two. Would assume they will be separate scopes. When you say, you know, clearing trees or whatever it is, right? Obviously, you're only clearing the phase one trees, right?
Right.
If that's the case, right? And then phase two, you're clearing those trees. So I guess we'd like to understand, you know, I, I see the sequence, right? But it applies to both phases? And, but in, a number of these are just phase one, right? So it would be good to sort of break those out. And so, so if I were to look at it and say, it says construct utilities. So when you say construct utilities for phase one, where does the line get drawn for that versus phase two? Do you have the map? Oh, okay. So in other words, is there a delineation of what you're going to build in phase one in infrastructure and all of that?
Yeah, it's right along the phase one.
Okay. And that's shown on this drawing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think we should try to break that out in the construction sequence so we know what it is we're looking at. So, so the phase two utilities don't require any of the phase two roads to be in, in order to build the phase one utilities?
That's correct. So what, what we were alluding to about phase one being standalone, that's basically how we came up with the phase lines, was we know we have to connect heavily all the way over to Tiltwood, right? So we looked at, we got to put all of that road in, what stormwater basins have to be in, what water loops have to be in. Do we have all the sewer going to where we needed to go, the sewer, all the houses in that phase? So when we say it's standalone, that's how we looked at it, is that if we did hold off on phase two, every unit that's shown in phase one in the phasing plan has water, sewer, electric, gas, has all the utilities required to occupy.
And it meets the, sort of, the requirements for construction? Like the DPW requires, the looping that's required and all that?
Yes.
Okay. I think we'd like to get clear on that. So, I mean, we're all talking about it now, but it seems to me we should have a clear definition of those two things. Does it, do you think it makes sense to come back to the planning board to ask to start phase two and present? We were going to talk about that a little bit, about performance bonds and stuff, but present how you're going to handle the surety on that.
It took the deep six.
I guess we're not going to get that one, huh?
We can pull it out from the plan set if you want. I mean, the plan set clearly, it does show a phase, phase one and phase two. You want me to pull it out?
Can you pull it up here?
No, I mean, I can tape it up there, but I'll rip it out and tape it, but I mean...
Yeah, if you've got, if you've got the actual...
We, I mean...
Do you want it? Is it in here?
Yeah.
So basically, among other things, we should tape this, and we should have one sheet labeled phase one and one sheet labeled phase two with the differentiation between...
Right. Yeah, just where the limits, it seems to me where the limits of activity and work are going to be in Phase One versus Phase Two.
What's the sheet?
It's pretty close to the front. I think it's after page three. It was very, it was very close to up front. That sheet.
That?
Oh, yep. Phase One, sorry, Phase Two.
On this sequence, when you're, when you make your Phase One and Phase Two lists, at the bottom of Phase One or the top of Phase Two, you want it to say, "On the drawings, the output will come back before the planning board before any of this works." Does it actually need to say that?
Yes.
Well, we'll condition the permit that way, too. So, but it might be good to have it there.
Just so they know that's what you want, that that's how it's written.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
It's very important that, you know, knowing that this is a project of multiple years and boards change, staff changes, it's very important that that condition clarify that we would be coming back to you to confirm, for example, that Phase One is, you know, being built out to be self-sufficient as you expected it to be. Maybe we're coming back to you to post the bond for Phase Two, if that's the way we structure bonding. But it's very important to us that it's clear for future boards or for the town that Phase Two can start while Phase One is still under construction, that there's not some question of whether or not Phase Two is going to be allowed.
No, we can write the condition to be clear on that. I don't see that as a problem.
That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
What I want to be more clear on is what is Phase One and what is Phase Two? And what will be done in each of those phases? So that we're clear on that, right? And so now, I know nobody else can see this, but I am looking at, what drawing are we looking at, Richard?
Well, it's five of fifty-nine.
Page five of fifty-nine, which looks like the phasing drawing. Is that right? And as I look at it, the delineation of the phasing is kind of, where is our...
Well, basically, Road A and Road F are constructed so that you can get from Hatherley to Tilden, as you mentioned.
But it's saying, from this side, all the way over, nothing is getting cleared in here, right?
Correct. Or constructed.
So, Road A, if we look at Road A intersecting with Road F, for example, right? Road A is essentially kind of a, if you're coming from Tilden, it's a right-hand turn. There is no following it straight through. Road F doesn't get built. Is that right?
Right, that's the basic...
And so, therefore, any utilities that are designed to be in Road F are not built.
Nope, they're just stubbed off.
They're just stubbed off there.
Yep.
And the utilities that need to be looped, if that's stubbed off, are still, are still looped. Right? I'm not asking you a question. I don't know the answer, so...
Yeah.
It is, okay. So, and as I see this, we're going right through, sort of, the middle. I'm not quite sure I understand. So the stormwater D basin gets built, all the stormwater basins get built in Phase One?
Yeah, except for the one way up at the end of Road F basin C.
Oh, for, except for C?
Yep. Because some portion of all of the roads in Phase One contributes to those bases.
And so, on, if you take a, if you go a little bit down Road A and then the phasing line turns, is that north? Turns sort of north?
Yeah, roughly.
On one side are buildings twenty-one through twenty-eight. On the Phase Two side are buildings twenty-nine through thirty-six and, actually, through forty-four. So, at that point where the phasing line stops, what happens at the grade line? Aren't you bringing in a lot of fill for the stuff on, like, twenty-one through twenty-eight? So what happens there?
So where...
Does that change the drainage flow? Does that change the grading there?
Obviously, well, the units in Phase Two, those actually sit up much higher than units twenty-one through twenty-eight. So...
The ground does, or it will when you fill it?
Yeah, the buildings are staggered like that.
So that, so the ground, the natural topography sits up higher?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been the same...
Right, and the final grades sit up higher. So, obviously, we're not going to...
It's fine, great, it's been enough to fill.
At the phase line, you can't just stop, stop, you know, work to a T, right? We have to grade things off so that...
That's what I'm getting to.
Stormwater work, so that the stormwater works, our runoff works. So, yeah, we have to take that all into account when we come up with these phase lines.
And that has been taken into account? Somebody's analyzed that? There's, it's going to work, or how do we know that?
Well, when we design these phase lines, we're trying to break out to depict the roads that are getting built in these phases and the units that are getting built in these phases.
I get that.
Okay. So, you know, is there some incidental work just over that phase line to make sure things work right? They're quick to, but we're not clear-cutting into Phase Two to make things work.
So what's considered incidental work?
To make sure that our stormwater erosion control is...
I know, but is that sixty feet into, on the other side of the phase line? Is that five feet on the other side of the phase line? In other words, you're going to have to then clear, right? In order to do that. So this is what I'm getting at, is where are you drawing this line so that nobody has a question later on, is they've encroached into Phase Two already?
Do you want to pick a number? Because we're, you know, we're expecting, you know, once you get out there and you're in the field, we can plan all day, but you've got to stand there and figure out, "Okay, we didn't anticipate, you know, this issue with water, so what are we going to do?" Do you want to pick, maybe we pick a certain, you know, way?
Well, if you pick a line here, then I would say that's the line that we would expect, unless you came back to us and said, "This line needs to change for a particular reason."
No, I'm not talking about moving the line. I'm saying that we've identified a line at a project level, it's a high level at that scale, but maybe there's fifty feet of, you know, leeway to do things like cut down a few trees and knock out a piece of ledge so that the water flows the way we thought it was going to flow, that sort of thing. You know, say there's a giant boulder that's right on the line, we, you know, just got to get out there with the building commissioner and work things out.
What do you think, Janet?
I would have thought that twenty-five feet would...
Adequate?
But I did not.
It will come back and deal with it.
I mean, grade, if they have to grade something bad, you have to bring it back, sharp, or it won't go one way or other down. I think it usually makes that happen.
Can I ask a question? Maybe, maybe this works. And as Janet was saying, maybe you say twenty-five feet, and if there's anything more than that, why don't you delegate that, that it won't be happening, except upon review and approval by the town planner and the conservation agent? So if there's some small site adjustment, they can do that. You don't want to wait two weeks if you're in the middle of construction.
Yeah, well, it's a long project, so...
No, no, but if you encounter something, you want drainage to work correctly, you do it. You don't wait two weeks for a tsunami.
Approval.
And you want the slope stabilized in a stable slope. So I think that that makes a lot of sense.
As long as we're not, the adjustment is not sort of fundamentally changing the stormwater design, right? We ran into this before, and I don't want to run into it on this project.
No, no, the stormwater design's stormwater design. The reason for going further into the phase is to comply with the stormwater design. And so, all I'm just asking is, honestly, adjustments have to happen. And if the conservation agent and the town planner reviews and say, you know, on-site, that's reasonable, it's a boulder there, you've got to go ten feet further in, they say...
I'm fine with that concept, I guess, and I'll leave it to the other members of the board to see if they're fine with it. My sort of threshold question is, you've drawn a phase line, and I'm assuming, but I don't know that as a fact, that you've analyzed that phase line to the point that the stormwater system as designed is going to work, the infrastructure as designed is going to work, right? That we're not going to come back with a whole new design because, "Well, when we got there, well, this, you know, this elevation was here and this was there, but we knew that all along," right? So that's what I'm asking, is somebody analyze that.
Yes, maybe this is the way to answer it. When anyone asks us to create a phase line, that's what that question means to us. A phase line to us is, okay, how does the sewer work on there? How does the water work? How does the looping work? How does the grading work? You know, to us...
So you've looked at all of those issues?
That's how we would create phase lines. We would never create a phase line that doesn't start with, "Okay, well, how do you build out that phase? How is it self-sufficient?"
I appreciate that, so I'm only asking...
So the answer is, unapparently, yes.
Okay.
In all, in all areas.
Including the stormwater design.
In all areas, absolutely.
Then that would seem to me that a twenty-five-foot sort of adjustment is, or wiggle, really, is inappropriate.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
I mean, in reality, if someone's going to be thirty, you're going to, when you start stabilizing, it's going to move a little bit.
Yeah, I just don't want somebody to look at twenty-five and say, "Well, we can do fifty, and we could do a hundred," right? And all of a sudden, you're starting to clear-cut a lot of trees, until we're ready to do it, right?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Where this line is, that delineates Phase Two, and you're talking about coming in possibly twenty-five feet, is that what you're saying? My question would be...
Only, only if necessary. It's not a carte blanche, right?
Right, I understand.
There has to be a rationale to do it.
You have a huge wetland in here.
They can't go in there anyway.
No, they can't, but some of it comes into here. I'm wondering, would it almost make more sense, just throwing this out, that this phase line run along Road F to the back? So that this is all part of Phase One, everything in Phase Two, which would be here and here, would not be touched? You wouldn't have to touch it? You wouldn't have to be cleared, nothing?
You'd have to construct the road, the way you're talking about.
No, no.
You wouldn't construct that road?
No.
You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to clear-cut all that unless you had to, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is, it gives them an option, and this may or may not be built right away. This all stays the same. They don't have to build this road yet, or this road either. They're going to come in F to A. That's it. And then if this phase line came over to Road F, am I making any sense here?
Well, Road F doesn't exist, so you're going to bring in the fill.
No.
Right?
No, no.
So, I think if they've drawn a phase line here, we ought to, since you've analyzed the phase line to the nth degree...
We'd love to stick with our phase line.
All right.
A lot of hours have gone into it.
All right, I just wanted to...
I just want to make sure that the phase line is truly one where, you know...
It's a realistic point to stop work.
It's a real, exactly. We'll say. And that the whole, the whole, you know, development would function as Phase One if nothing ever else got...
The answer's yes. We have a vested interest in getting that right, because when we get it wrong, it really is painful for us to manage.
Okay. I'm good with that. How about questions?
No questions. Where they've drawn the phases seems reasonable.
I do think you should put Phase One and Phase Two on this drawing.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. Karen, did you have anything else on that?
I think that's the majority of items for construction, phasing, and erosion control. They may have additional concerns on construction phasing. I've heard concerns about the haul road?
Yes.
The haul routes? So I think this is the time where it would must be appropriate, since we're phasing construction.
What's the concern?
If I may interject, I went out with Jeff Delise and David, you? Yes. Because I was the one that brought up going down Henry Turner Bailey Road, and they were absolutely correct. I was wrong. Occasionally, I am.
Don't put that in the minutes, please.
Bailey, she was wrong. Trying to take that right onto Hatherley Road is almost impossible. There's a tree, there's the lights, it's a deadly intersection to begin with. And so, Jeff pointed out to me, and Dave as well, if you come down Beaver Dam Road to the lights at Tilden, there is enough room to swing onto Tilden Road.
No, DPW disagrees. DPW does not want Tilden Road used. They want Jericho. They agree with Beaver Dam to Jericho to Hatherley, but they say Tilden is not wide enough.
If you're, they're right there.
I mean, so that's, that's where I disagree there.
I reviewed Jericho with our trucking company, and that intersection is precarious in a couple of different ways for big trucks, you're talking tractor-trailer sized trucks.
Yeah, I think that's a tough turn.
Taking that left-hand turn, and you're coming down a hill and turning sharply in the stop line for the traffic coming from Jericho is right at the corner. So you'd be clipping cars and making that opposite turn coming from Jericho back up Beaver Dam Road to head back towards 3A. There would not be enough swing out for a truck to make that uphill, almost half-blind turn up back up. It would be...
So do you have another suggestion?
By far the best way, of all the routes I drove with our trucking company, is going on Beaver Dam to Tilden. And the reason why that is, is the intersection that Tilden and Beaver Dam is a very large intersection. The stop line for the streets that come into it are very far away, permitting a truck with a large trailer to swing out wide, and more than enough ample room to miss the small little granite island with the blinking light. More than enough room to miss that. So from that direction, it would be ample opportunity for them to make the turn. And of course, coming from Tilden, turning right onto Beaver Dam, heading back towards 3A, that's a simple, that's just a simple right-hand turn as well. By far the most conducive to, and really permissible for large trucks to make those turns.
And so then you're going to go down Tilden to Turner and then go left on Hatherley?
They don't need to.
Well, we have a back entrance. The whole site continues all the way straight through.
Is that your construction entrance? Is Tilden a construction entrance? Where's the construction entrance?
I, I mean, I thought the major construction entrance was going to be off of Hatherley.
They're going to have both.
I mean, they're going to have both.
Well, where does it show on the plan? It shows a construction...
It shows construction entrances on both, on both ends. Yes, it does.
And why did the DPW object? Just the width of Tilden?
Well, because it's hard to make the turn on Tilden. They maintain with the, with the new sidewalks and everything there. And does, when you go down Tilden, don't you pass the school?
No, no.
No?
Never gets the school.
Never gets the school?
Never. Nope.
And, you know, it's sort of like, you know, pick the least worst option?
Yeah.
Anywhere we go, we're going to have to make a turn, right?
The other thing is...
I would agree that Jericho at Beaver Dam is tighter and there's going to be a heck of a lot more traffic there, coming through town.
The other thing is to ensure that if Tilden is used, and I know that the neighbors are concerned, because these are big trucks, that they keep the speed down to a minimum, that there'll be no zoom, zoom. It's, the speed limit there is twenty-five when you come around the corner, and then it should remain twenty-five for these trucks until they get where they're going. And the same should be true when they come out of there, sidewalks notwithstanding. Those trucks, you know, it's tough for them to stop, whether they're full or empty.
I mean, I don't know what other options there are.
I looked at it, and it is a wide swing into Tilden Road. And I know that there's a lot of complaint about that island, but it was, I guess, the rationale was to sort of funnel traffic...
On either side.
On either side. And that's just my two cents. There's no good solution, regardless of what we do.
Do you think, do you think that Hatherley turn is... Do you think that Hatherley turn is worse than the Tilden turn?
Yes. There's a big tree, there's, the sightline-
Tilden has a lot of trees, right? A lot of sort of low-hanging trees in it. We don't want to have to trim all the trees there, right?
Nothing, nothing that I saw that would-
For a big truck?
Yeah. I mean, you can understand UPS trucks, a lot of your delivery trucks are very equivalent in height, so nipping presumably going down to deliver parcels to private residents for years.
You know what, Steve? When they put in that trail, that's what they want to call it, the trail, there were a lot of trees that were along the line there that they took down because they had these, what do they call them, lion cots or something? The wires went right through them, and the branches and some, those trees are gone.
Utility butchers. I don't know. Would, anybody else have any other thoughts on routes? I mean, it does seem like it's, it's, you know, not as bad an option as some others, but-
What about coming back? If you came down Hatherley and you took a left on country, or Gannett Road on a return trip, did that turn that way?
It's just as bad, it's just as bad.
The stop line for the folks coming from Gannett, heading towards the water, is right at the, right at the fire height of there, which is, it's almost right at the intersection. So, you know, a smaller construction vehicle, yeah, a smaller typical-sized construction vehicle could make that left turn, but you get into a larger vehicle, you obviously would run the risk that if it was a vehicle that they couldn't make that left-hand turn without clipping, so to speak, the corner, which they'd presumably have stopped the car right there.
You also have that hedge. Huge hedge.
Really narrows the road right there.
Yeah, it's very narrow. That whole intersection is a disaster. There's no good way.
So if you lived on Gannett, you'd be missing the trucks. If you lived on Gannett, you'd miss the trucks.
If you lived on Gannett?
It's a big decision.
Says the guy who lives on Gannett. I guess, you know, Karen, given the discussion, it probably is wise to have DPW look at this again.
I will review it with DPW.
It just, I tend to agree that Beaver Dam to Jericho would be a very difficult, kind of messy thing to do with as many trucks as we're talking about.
And not only just the sightlines and the hill and everything you mentioned, it's just that it's also a busier, it's right near the harbor, so it's just busier in general.
Karen, did you ever find out where the big rocks those trucks went? Do they ever tell you?
Yeah, they do. They go down 123 to Drift Way to, through the harbor, up, and they turn right on Jericho, and then they either go down Hatherley and then switch in one of the avenues, or they go down Jericho to Ocean, Turn, I'm not, yeah, Turn to Oceanside.
But they went through downtown?
They went through downtown.
They go over the door.
Well, there you go.
But they, we're not talking about 2,000-
No, we're talking, we're-
Right, they're hauling some big rocks.
They're hauling some big, big rocks.
And there's some truck traffic, but it's not huge, right? For that.
Yeah, I mean, it might be four or five a day.
Right, they're talking about a lot more than that.
No, I, yeah.
Could we request so that we don't ping pong back and forth with the disagreement with DPW, that maybe Dave, if they're willing to just meet out and do what Ann did today, because it sounded, you know, Dave's been out a couple times, including with trucking companies, and he has reported back, it just seems very obvious what the right thing to do is, so-
It'd be better to get-
Just be better to get out and feel-
Experts together and do that, I think.
Along with Karen, please. Take care of it.
Yeah.
Sign you up for field trip.
I'll arrange it.
Okay. Cool. This is a butchers. I didn't bring this.
Oh, good. Get in the back and let him deal with it.
Uh-oh.
Now we messed it up.
Now you've got to give me a new set.
I can give you a new set, right now. And then, do we have any, no, we've been going on, I see we have members of the public here, are there any questions or comments at this stage?
Yes, sir. Ermine Road.
Could you identify yourself?
Field check, which is 29th Avenue.
Yep.
Opening up the access. Is that a done deal?
Opening up the access.
Access to the project.
Well, it's just, it's sort of an emergency, limited access. It's not a, it's not a full-time access.
Okay, so it's not amused?
Rumble strip.
Well-
We talked about-
And I'm actually looking at the drawing right now. We talked about putting cobblestones, or cobble or some sort-
Rumble strip.
Rumble, yeah. But that people could technically drive over it, but it would be a little bit restrictive.
It's designed to discourage it as a regular route.
It will increase traffic on, say, Norwell Avenue, Longley.
And Norwell Avenue?
Yep.
Norwell?
Where's Norwell?
Oh, I think it's off the-
To Tilden and up to House.
It's off the-
You've got, uh, Longley, which goes up to House.
To get in.
Like fall and then-
Yeah. Ermine goes down to Hatherley, right? Or Norwell.
Ermine is dead end behind Martin Tech School.
Right. But where does it?
Goes out to Longley, which goes to Hatherley. If you take a left, you go down Norwell Avenue.
Yeah.
But there would be no one doing that, really.
It's going to be open.
Oh, here.
But-
He's saying, this is, Ermine, but this is, I think, wrong.
The actual development would be entering and/or exiting onto Tilden or Hatherley. There might be a few diehards.
There'd be a shortage.
There is no shortcut through there. There really isn't.
They want to go to North City, but they're giving me going down Norwell Avenue. It's not going to go all the way up to Tilden, yeah, which is-
Probably only, you know, it's probably a handful of residents that might consider going down. You put it, put it bumpy enough, it may be-
You don't want to affect the alignment of your car.
Exactly.
Well, I think we discussed that it would only be maybe those few residents at the, at the end there.
Yeah.
That would, and I don't have the numbers here of the-
If they've gone in that direction.
Yeah.
And so what you do is you have at the beginning of Ermine-
Okay, here's Norwell.
Dead end. It's there, right? And then at this cobble thing we put up a sign, or you all put up a sign that says, "Do not enter." So it's open, but it is restricted. Does that make sense?
We'll consult the sign makers for Cole Parkway.
Well, we have a few extra, I think. Just a few. Do not enter.
Yeah, because I think originally proposed, there was like a cable or something, right?
Like three hour marking there?
Yeah, really.
Was that A or?
B.
But just so I understand, originally, I believe Toll Brothers proposed like a cave or a gate or something. And we were the ones that I think liked that would have to be open.
Don't want that.
You know, if it became something that we felt was being abused, then there's no reason we couldn't come back and put a grid.
Or, I think we also said the sign like residents only or something.
Yeah, people don't pay attention to that. They do pay attention to do not enter, most of the time.
I think the idea was to give these residents sort of an emergency out so they didn't have to go all the way through the community in, in the event of an emergency or something.
You know, if something happened on Road A that precluded them getting out to Tilden or to Hatherley, they have an option.
Any other comments or questions?
There is one.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we have two questions, or pardon, and a road. Having, you know, currently living through the sewall construction, and because they've had to, you know, push things and push things, come up at 6:00 AM with the sound of trucks, so very conscious of noise and what construction brings, and that's a small project compared to what we're looking at with this project. I'm wondering if, is it too premature to discuss what the noise ordinance is going to be, or what, what the plan is going to be around construction? And do they measure like decibels of noise for the school that's abutting as well? And this is just all kind of coming together from you visually, and kind of in my sense of, that's one question.
I don't know if I can fully answer that, but, you know, from the perspective of start and stop times, we'll have defined start and stop times for construction. So nobody should be running a bulldozer at 6:00 AM. We wouldn't let people start that early. So we'll have defined construction time periods. In terms of measured decibels, I don't, I don't know what the local ordinance is.
And I'm just mindful that there's now a tree school abutting, and what that's meaning for them. And honestly, I'm surprised that coming to these meetings, I've never seen any representation from the school.
Those will also tend to be in Phase 2, so they're going to be a little bit out too. You will have that Phase 2 tree line buffer there for, I don't, depends on how fast you actually build Phase 1 and sell Phase 1.
I think that the worst part of all of it will be up, is destroying the concrete. That's what's going to make the noise, more than anything else. Would you not agree with breaking up the concrete?
It's, that's loud. It's a relatively short period of time.
Okay.
But it's loud, yeah.
There are, there are state, there are state limitations on noise as well, so. And I forget what it is. It's, I think there's a nuisance and a DBA law too.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
Okay.
Can I just ask if relatively short period of time could be defined? Do you know that yet? I mean-
This is for granted, any concrete?
Yeah, for crushing the concrete, you know, we should be able to do it in under two months.
Wow. And you will control the dust?
Yes, it's great.
And depending upon the, the construction time and sequence, the school may or may not be out, I mean, if it's during the summer, the school wouldn't have classes. Depending, I guess, when the, the start would be, that could be an impact or-
Is there noise abating you can do to it? Can you put those big blocks around the, the device? So it controls those?
Well, the device itself would be more in the fault of the clear area right now, which is a pretty significant distance, and we're talking about the school.
Well, I'm just talking about the property lines.
There's also the water.
Yeah, I'm talking about the property lines, and to the extent that you have an excess noise situation there can be mitigated by those temporary, you know, blocks that I've seen before.
I've never seen that done on a crusher. A crusher, you're feeding stuff in, pop.
Right.
I've never seen any way this should go.
All right. So let's, let's find out what the DP, yes?
I don't have the construction sequence in front of me, but is the trees coming down after the concrete? Is tree buttering going to be there for some of that?
Route number 10, perform land clearing, rubbing, and stump removal. And then 11 is crush existing concrete.
Yeah. So that sounds like it's going to be going on relatively sequentially, right, or at the same time?
It's about cleaning up the slate and building houses.
After the tree's there, so that the new blockers on for those abutting.
The point is just to, and again, not to state the obvious, but the concrete crushing is about cleaning up an existing bad situation. It's not about building houses.
Well, but there, there are, let's find out what the state noise ordinances are. Because I do think they have both a property line limit and a nuisance.
I think they do. I think you're correct, yeah.
And I do think from what our walkthrough, most of the concrete is in kind of the center of the site and buffered pretty well, from what I remember.
And then what you might want to think about doing, if it's at all possible, is to flip, perform land clearing, rubbing, et cetera. Flip 10 and 11, so you-
Smoke stacks was like here.
Some tiny trees around the concrete and those buildings, get rid of them first and then cut stuff.
But there's no really, there's these people over here, but there's nothing here, right?
I can only say we'll look at it. I don't want to speak for the site contractor that Scott's working with, so.
There's quite a bit of buffer.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, um, making-
Surrounding this area of crushing concrete, I mean, it just seems intuitive.
Definitely could look at it there.
All right, please do. Please do. I think, all you have to do, flip it. I mean, it's, if it's right in the center, that everything that exists, brush, et cetera, is outside that area, so you get rid of your stuff, knock things down, et cetera, et cetera, and then boom. That makes sense to me. It's an easy switch.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that this is also, as this gentleman said, that this is part of maybe remediation? Is that correct?
I didn't hear you.
Is that crushing part of remediation in terms of a potential contamination?
No.
No, no.
So I thought that might have been why he was always-
Nope, no.
I think it's the way you have to deliver it to the landfill, right? I mean, you have to, you have to separate essentially by crushing the steel from the concrete, right?
Has there been any discussion about the remediation?
Yes.
A lot.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a full remediation, a draft plan anyway, and I think we've been through that at somewhat great length. And it is on our, on our detailed plan here.
Where was that? It's in here. Is it on the website?
No, it's not.
No.
Nine.
Number nine, perform environmental remediation work.
Yeah. So it's relatively early in the process. Any other questions? Okay.
There's one more.
I'm sorry, I keep looking down at people. This is a-
I just have one more. Christine Lo, the proving grounds group. These are all prefabricated homes, correct?
No, not correct.
Oh, they're not? And are there stick built? Are there any stick built?
I'll let the proponent address that.
Well, it might be a terminology point of clarification, but when you say prefab, they're not modular, no.
They're not, okay.
So we have a framing crew that assembles to some, a combination of stick built, as it's known, where they're literally taking individual pieces of lumber and nailing each piece together. And then some of the wall frame panels are machine-assembled and shipped to the site. But that's really the only component of a prefabricated home. The rest is trades like any other house.
Okay. The reason I was asking about that is because, obviously, when a modular home is shipped, it's a huge deal. So I was concerned about the trucking for all of these modular homes, but they're not doing that, so I guess that was obviously my assumption.
No problem. Thank you.
Couple other items on my list was the master deed in homeowners association documents.
We submitted those a long time ago.
Right. So we just need to review those, and I think we've started to get some feedback from town council on that.
I gave everybody, just, she only had two comments.
Okay.
And so I gave a copy to each in your folders, and I gave a copy in, to the applicant tonight.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, the only comment I'd make is, so confusion in terminology. The word phasing has to do, it's a legal term of art, it has nothing to do with the construction phasing, nothing. So I think the town council, I don't mind speaking with her, is to clarify this, is under 183A, there's a specific statutory requirements on phasing, is because-
This is about when they take control of the homeownership association? This is about when they take control of the homeownership association?
No, nope. What this is, is under law, you cannot create a condominium unit until there's an as-built plan of it. Consequently, you have to do a phasing where you bring in, as each pod is constructed, where you can build an as-built plan. It's required that the plan be filed at the registry, and there's a phasing amendment to bring it in. So in other words, you can't, you can't put on plans for 20 half-built or three-quarters built units. So that's what phasing means. It's a term of art under the statute, it has nothing to do with the construction.
Okay. So, but I take it, just from reading this, her concern is how the phasing, as we've defined it, is integrated into the homeowners association? In other words, when do they take control of it? When do they have responsibilities?
Well, the homeowners association doesn't take control of projects finished. Toll Brothers is in charge of the entire project.
Well, can I clarify?
No, you're, you're the owner of the, you're the homeowners association at that point, right?
Upon the first closing, the homeowners association is created. It's its own entity.
Right.
And Toll sits on, the board of trustees are Toll Brothers at that point. So we control the board of trustees, the, so the property is owned at that point by the association, and then we're phasing in the units over time. So right from the onset of delivering homes, the association stands on its own in terms of owning the property.
Okay.
And then at some point, and I think the law requires, allows us to transition control at 100% occupancy. If we might choose to do that sooner, but there'd be a rolling election of resident board members onto the board of trustees over time. You got any role?
No, you got it. Get on.
Okay. So I think, I think it'd be good to sort of circle back with her then and make sure we get the appropriate modifications made.
Well, are there modifications necessary?
Well, she seems to think so, even if it doesn't go here. So all I'm saying is let's...
We'll get whatever we need.
We'll coordinate, we'll coordinate.
Can I, can I just suggest to close the loop on the condominium documents? What I think is commonplace is while, if there are any specific conditions or requirements with the condominium docs, those could be written into the decision, but generally, the final version of the documents is produced before we convey the first home. That's just what we're used to.
So the final version would be then subject to review before...
Yeah, in other words, approved by town council.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think we get traffic rules, so we have two suggestions and two recommendations. Why don't we, why don't we close them out? We got a memo from...
We got a memo late this afternoon from traffic rules.
All this stuff I haven't read.
I didn't read any.
You were there, right?
No, I left before they're doing it today. They were doing...
All right, well, this says, "Regular rapid flashing beacon, flash beacons have recently been prohibited by Federal Highway Administration. Alternative proven pedestrian crossing solutions are available and shall be installed in substitution at Hatherley Road. These include solar powered blinker sign with amber LEDs or blinker beacons with 12-inch amber LEDs." Do you know anything about this? Because I have no clue.
This just came out in the past week, this ruling.
Were you aware that Federal Highway issued this prohibition?
It's just in the past week that Federal Highway came out with this. That's what I was told today.
Well, maybe we should...
I just think so if you want to. So Federal, yeah, so the rectangular, oh sure, Aaron Ford, that one, the man of the suit. So the rectangular rapid flashing beacon had what they call interim approval from Federal Highway, because it wasn't in the latest version of the ETCD. And recently, they rescinded that interim approval, not due to safety concerns or ineffectiveness, it was just due to patent, patent issues that have been occurring, and so they rescinded their interim approval. So everybody's kind of been scrambling to figure out what to replace these things with. And so what traffic rules commission has identified are the two alternatives. One is the pedestrian walk sign, the diamond yellow sign with small LED lights in the border that flash when somebody pushes the button. And the other one is more like a signal head, it's more just a yellow ball indication that flashes slower than the rectangular rapid flashing beacon would, much like at a unsignaled intersection, like the amber yellow that flashes to indicate that there's an intersection, something like that. It would be very similar instead of with a push button that would only turn on when someone activated it.
And is there darkness things? I don't know anything about these things. Will your traffic guy know something about it?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't.
What, what do you guys recommend?
I think they're both, I think they've had similar effectiveness. I think a lot of it comes down to aesthetics, you know, the bigger flashing yellow versus the smaller LEDs. But again, the, the sign itself really provides most of the notifications to the driver because of its reflectiveness, the flashing has just been added.
Draw your attention to them. Okay. Well, I think either one, you know. Well, Janet, if you'll check in.
Yes, I'll check.
See which one he recommends. It also says, "Off-site digital speed signs on Hatherley Road and Tilden Road should be shown in plan set." So what are the, are those the, the speed limit, the measure the speed limit? So what are they asking for? They work these as temporary while the construction's done?
No, these are permanent, these are permanent things. Just like was put on, about for Blanchard Farm. Traffic rules would like them, and so they want them as part of the project.
And where would they go?
I believe they identify, I believe they said in their original note, somewhere maybe two on Hatherley and two on Tilden. I don't have the original memo in front of me, but they're just reiterating that they would like them and they'd like them shown on this plan set.
Do you have any more insight to it though?
No.
No. Would a digital speed sign take the place of a solar powered blinker sign with LED?
No, no, it doesn't.
They're two different things.
They're two different things.
Yeah.
Is this similar to what's on Branch Street? Slow you down to 20 miles an hour?
Yeah.
Those?
Yeah.
Hate those.
Well, this is what the traffic rules has wanted, and I'm trying to follow up with all the departments so, to make sure that all their comments stand, so we can let the applicant, let the, no, and the app, they're letting that, traffic rules saying that they want these.
Crosswalks and that, do you remember that?
That's...
No, I'm biased.
No.
I think they, they're appropriate, although I will say, like, if they're off-site, how can they be shown on the plan set? Like, unless they're right next to the, or on Hatherley?
You can put a note, you know, place, you know, placement to be determined in the field with a DPW.
Okay. I think, I agree with you. I think they're ugly. And I don't know why we would put two on each street.
Well, one going and one coming.
We, our recollection is we talked this out a few meetings back, and we decided against those particular...
Excuse me?
We thought we had said we would do the crosswalks and not, not the others.
I remember that as well. I think that was the agreement.
Okay.
You've got nine o'clock.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And again, with the ninth, what's it going to ask about? For the next meeting? Were we supposed to talk about surety? Because they had some ideas on that.
That was the last thing on my list.
Oh, okay.
So you, you segued right into the very last thing that we have a minute and a half to talk about.
Go ahead. What, on surety?
So we're pretty familiar with most of surety. We have to do it on most of our projects. So we continue to have surety bonds. What we typically do in most cases is requirement is most that surety bonds prior to the first certificate of the property. And you could write that as a condition that, you know, we can't get a CO until that bond is, is in place. And typically, most municipalities are good with that approach because there's, you know, leading up to that point, there's no repercussions. You don't have people living there that, that need infrastructure. You know, they don't need the security until we get to that point. It allows us to build that infrastructure, get it in place at a time. And obviously, the, the amount of that bond typically is, most towns are reviewed by the DPW and the town engineer to agree upon them. Most of the bonds would be, language that is agreed with, playing along with town council.
I'd like to speak, please.
Yes, I'm sure you had a comment on that.
I don't think that the town quite agrees with that philosophy. I think that the bond is supposed to be posted prior to construction, and I think that the town would prefer cash surety.
Well, the, the only thing I'd say to that is statutory, and as a matter of fact, we're talking surety bond, the customary way you do this is a covenant. And a covenant, just like in any subdivision control, a covenant ensures you can't sell anything or convey anything, and the whole statutory procedure for that. Usually what segues in it is that when a substantial amount of the infrastructure is done, that's when you do a surety bond, particularly from the Toll Brothers situation is they, Massachusetts statute, subdivision control is either covenant, surety, or securities in cash, but they're certainly not amenable to putting a cash bond down. That's the reason why, you know, they're, they're bonded the way they are, and so you can get surety bonds. And this is the biggest companies in the, in the country providing the surety. So in other words, we're not amenable to putting millions of dollars in a bank account. We'll provide a national AAA surety company.
Then I would suggest perhaps it has to be a covenant, and then when the covenant gets released, some type of cash surety. The town, the option under the subdivision control law that Mr. Orenberger was referring to is up to the choice of the town treasurer. The town treasurer prefers a cash. We've had problems in the past with tripartite agreements and performance bonds.
If I can, let's revisit that, Karen.
Yeah, we, we can revisit this.
We'll talk with the treasurer, but what I'm saying is...
I did talk with the treasurer today.
Okay, am I reading the statute though? It's the, it's the applicant's, it's not the town's obligation to do that. But we'll work it out.
Well, but I think the timing is of concern too, because, I mean, the, the performance guarantee is written into the bylaw, and I think it's far before, prior to first occupancy. That's my reading here. It's before approving the definitive plan, the planning board shall require that construction of ways, installation of utilities, and construction and installation of all other amenities required by the special permit of this bylaw, as well as possible restoration of the site be secured by a type and amount of security satisfactory to the board.
And that's what a covenant is.
Right, that's what a covenant is.
We agree with that, a covenant 100% from day one, absolutely.
Well, why don't you...
We'll pursue it. We'll, we'll pursue it.
Have a little conversation, and we'll come, report back to us.
Do we want to briefly talk about drainage at 6th Ave?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what this is?
Yep.
Yes, that's what that...
I wondered what we were going to get to this. Okay, let's talk about drainage. We, we're going to go over a few minutes. We got five minutes to talk about this. Can we do it in five?
I think we could.
Okay. Who's going to talk about it?
I guess I'll talk first.
Okay.
Kevin Vine. We met with the DPW last week, and then we spoke subsequently with Janet. And what we've done is prepared a schematic plan at this point to sit down with the DPW. That's the time you have in front of you. I'm not sure, yours is color?
Yeah.
It is.
The, the yellow is the existing drainage. And there are some basins out there with a whole bunch of pipes, and no one knows where they go.
Sounds right.
There's some drain, there's some basins out there that aren't shown by, aren't known by the DPW. They haven't shown on their plans. So what we proposed is that we would add the orange approximately where it is, the first basin on the southeast side. That captures our drainage of wetlands and the wetlands here in the wetlands. They already know it, have them. You've got some burns, you've got some ditches, you've got a mixture of everything, and you've got a bunch of seepage. So our thought was we'd put a basin, probably double catch, double break catch basin right at the beginning, and then run that down through two more basins on the west side of Hatherley that would be installed within a swale. We're just going to lower it so that what we've got coming down, currently coming down the hill through the wetlands that gets on to Hatherley, gets captured right there. That's, gets all that current stuff. It'll get the future stuff, which is less than the current, but it's going to solve the current problem right now. And then we would tie that into Sixth Avenue. And come out with a manhole on Sixth Ave and then tie it in. We're still looking at, the catch basin at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Hatherley, and try to figure out where that is tied in. We think it's tied into the catch basin by 152, lot 152, but we're not sure. If we need to, there, there may be a manhole under there that's covered, nobody knows where it is. But it's, if it is, it's under the concrete roadway that is Sixth Avenue. But that's all going to, we're going to have to be adding a water line, we're going to be adding a sewer line down there, and the drain line. So that's all going to get redone as we do it.
This is construction that's going to happen in the wetlands?
In the buffer. It is in the buffer. And then we do show one other basin up to, the extreme left of the plan, further to the north, that is in the wetlands. We have talked with Janet about that, and what we're instead going to do is just try and rehab the existing one that is just probably blocked and not doing anything.
The one that goes across Hatherley?
Yes. Yeah, because right now, that's not doing anything. And then what we would do along Hatherley is we're going to have our little ditch, our little drainage swale, and then we're going to have a couple of inlets off of Hatherley. Because right now, there are no basins on Hatherley. Whatever gets to the top of the hill goes right down the gutter line. It's got a couple of outlets where it gets into the wetlands. It's also got some areas where the wetlands seep back onto Hatherley. So the idea is to capture it, and then we can direct some of the Hatherley stuff down into these catch basins. And then we'll rehab the one catch basin that's got, right now, five out, five inlets or outlets, but we don't, well, when the servers went out there, they can't find where they went. So we tied that with our system too. So the idea is to try and build a new system down on that, off of Hatherley, but to capture Hatherley and to keep anything from getting onto Hatherley.
And is this infrastructure that would belong to you or to the DPW?
DPW.
And they're okay with that?
Yeah, there's an existing danger condition we're fixing. It's not a condition...
Yeah, I just want to make sure we know...
The town likes the proposed solution, and if that means putting a new catch basin as shown in red at the nor, at, where the, as an existing one is clogged, then the, the town likes that. The town is in favor of this proposed solution in a concept way, but we understand that all the numbers haven't been run, and they would have to amend their notice of intent to include the one, the catch basin in the wetlands if the catch basin is going to be installed. And I preliminary talked to the conservation agent today who understands that it would eliminate a major flooding problem. So, I mean, was, was receptive to the idea.
We were just out there today, in fact, and it's, this whole area is wet. It's puddled, it's iced up, and it's just, it's not going anywhere.
Who, who's we?
Uh, Scott and I.
Oh, okay.
Came here right before coming to this meeting, because we had done it, remember the DPW last week? We went there, we couldn't find anything, because it was all in the snowbank. So we went back today, and there's no snowbank, but there's water.
And just one other question, then we're going to need to move on. The, so this is collecting water from the site and dumping it into the town storm drain system. Prior to that, this design, where was the water going?
On to Hatherley Road into some of those basins, puddle on Hatherley.
So it's going to end up in these...
It was already getting there, just not very efficiently.
All right. Any questions?
Works for me.
Seems good.
Anybody? Okay. All right, I think we need to move on here.
Can I ask one question?
Yes. Just one.
Oh, multiple clocks then.
Oh.
No, no, as far as the, as far as the conditions, one of the things I was talking with Karen and Brad Washburn about is if it, to figure out what these are and, and conditions, Brad and I think Karen said if they could facilitate a meeting if it's okay with the board, like we have with the DPW, if we kind of quantify and get our hands around these and start to, in other words, get conditions for the board to, to review.
I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it to Karen to take the lead on that and putting together the draft set of conditions and, you know. Do you feel like you need to facilitate it through a meeting, that, whatever you think is necessary?
Because the vast majority of my... Yeah, because the vast majority of morale, there will be, what, you know, the words, just like that DPW memo, 90% of it is agreeing in advance.
Okay. Do we have a motion for continuation?
We have, uh, we do have one. I mean, we have, um, there's, the question is, do you want to, we're not going to have time to continue the meeting to February, so we either have March 8th or April 12th. Um, that depends on the board's philosophy and the applicant's philosophy of when this additional information that has been requested for tonight would be most appropriate to discuss. And we also know that conservation is open, is meeting on the February 5th, will like may have a revision, so I just ask everyone to think about that and decide which date would be most effective for the project.
From our standpoint, I can just talk March 8th and stuff and we will jump on and get everything you want and, uh, they want to get the final, you know, finally get in the ground. As I said, if we're talking about noise and crushing, we want to, we want to start while the trees are in bloom here, so.
As long as you get on all of this, then I'm fine with the eighth, right? Will you be?
Absolutely.
I will be here on the eighth if I have to come by carrier pigeon, but I'll be here.
Thank you.
I'll get you here.
You'll get me here? Okay, I'll be here.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the residential cluster special permit for seaside at Situate by Toll Massachusetts Land III Limited Partnership. CEO Toll Brothers Incorporated off of Hathaway and Tilden Roads until March 8th, 2018 at 7:00 PM and continue the time for action to file decision with the town clerk until March 29th, 2018.
Give a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's try to get all of these open issues addressed soon so we're not, I hate to get stuck on March 8th in the morning.
Absolutely.
Right? So, if we can try to get through all of this fast, that would be good. Yeah, we're going to take about a two minute break and then get started on the next stuff. Moving on to our next agenda item, we're a little bit late. This is the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit for 105 Hathaway Road. And who do we have here?
My name's Don Gillespie with Wellby Builders.
My name is Paul Maravito for Ross Engineering Company, here representing the applicant, Wellby Builders.
Are you, are you the present occupant?
I'm the present owner of the building. It's a, it's a house that we were building on spec. We had a customer come in and put the house under agreement and the customer has parents that, elderly that live with them and the proposal is for an in-law addition to the house that we're building.
You're sort of representing the potential buyer here.
Correct.
Yeah, the house is under construction. I was driving up there just a couple of days ago.
Right, but the future owners have signed a notice that they intend to live in the accessory dwelling and their daughter will live in the primary dwelling. So that's, that is, we already, we have that documentation.
Do they actually own the house now?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
But they signed it as future owners.
Yeah, I get, I get it, I just wondered if they. Okay, so explain to us what you're doing.
The single family home will be built on lot two, which is where they frontage on Hathaway Road. This is one of the lots that the board approved about a year ago by Godfather Development. The existing dwelling is currently under construction. The accessory dwelling will be to the rear. It's a one-story condition. It's approximately 672 square feet, which is under your minimum allowed will 750 square feet. It'll have a open deck on the west side of it. The anvils that will be accessing the dwelling, the accessory dwelling will be parked inside the garage. The floor plan you have shows they park in the garage and walk through a breezeway inside the house into the accessory dwelling. Again, this, this will be added to the existing home that's under construction at present time. It'll also be serviced by the water and sewer that have been extended to the site as part of the construction of the single family home. The access will be over the common driveway, which is previously through a pipeline as well. So with that, I'll end.
How do we get in and out of it?
The unit itself?
Yes.
There's a doorway, because there's a walk from, from the garage into a breezeway and into the house in this area here. You can see that on the floor plan that was submitted with the application, but please that's on sheet number?
It's going through the mudroom. It's better actually to look at this one.
Sheet number A1.
And then the entrance one, entrance two.
Is this an entrance to the main residence?
There's a mudroom between the garage and the main house in the front and if you were to pass through that mudroom, you'd enter the in-law through the back of the mudroom. There's a doorway.
That's on the, that's on the third sheet in your, actually it's on the first sheet, uh, second sheet and third sheet in your bucket.
And, um. Where's the deck? What elevation is the deck with respect to the ground? Is that a means of egress?
The, that's an open deck, which would be ground level, it would be 10 feet by 10 feet. There's an elevation on sheet A2, that's the second sheet from the left, from the back.
Oh, okay. So it's the one to the left, is that it? Or is it this one? How do you get out?
There are sliders to the deck, steps.
So if you look at, there's another one.
Okay.
That's up to me.
So this is the side elevation. Okay. And is that, I take it from the building department's point of view, the access through the main house is an acceptable egress?
That's totally acceptable, yes, totally acceptable. And then the slider to the deck, so there's the two means of egress.
Okay. And water and sewer?
We have a letter from the sewer department that it's going to require half a sewer fee and water is going to be the water, whatever the water department hopes up.
But it's connected to the town sewer?
Town water, town sewer.
Any questions, Bill? Ian?
I just have, just curious, I noticed like on the elevation, on the rear elevation, the, the two windows above the ridge line, did those have to be moved? I was just curious, like, or were they already in place?
Uh, the windows above the ridge are in place, they will not have to be moved.
Okay. That's it.
Is this sided the same as the rest of the house?
It will be, yeah, same sided.
It'll all blend in as a single architectural unit?
Yeah, it's Maybach, pre-dip shingles and that's what the in-law will be. Same color, same material.
Ben?
I don't have anything.
Ben?
One.
Karen, do you have any quick?
It meets the size requirements, it's got, uh, it's got plenty of parking, it, the owners have signed a notarized statement, a separate housekeeping unit, the town water and sewer. It has the two means of egress, so it meets the standards of the accessory dwelling bylaw.
Okay. Well, then, do we have any questions from the public? Nope? Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Okay.
I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on December 27th, 2018, Wellby Builders LLC applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within a single family house at 105 Hathaway Road. Two, according to the application, the existing dwelling currently under construction has a gross floor area of 3,200 square feet and four bedrooms. Based on the application, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be 672 square feet. This is less than the maximum of 750 square feet allowed by the zoning bylaw. The accessory dwelling meets the size requirements of section 530.2F. Three, the accessory dwelling plan for 105 Hathaway Road dated December 20th, 2017 shows a garage with two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling. A driveway shows parking for the primary dwelling and is amply sized to handle four vehicles. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and sufficient parking for the primary dwelling. Four, the future owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will live on the property in the accessory dwelling. Five, the accessory dwelling is a separate housekeeping unit from the primary dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling will be on town sewer and water. Seven, there are two means of egress, a slider door to the deck and a door to the inside hall of the primary dwelling. Eight, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit. Those are the findings of fact.
All those in favor? Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, then all those in favor.
Aye. Okay, going on, I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 105 Hathaway Road with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on December 17th, 2015. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Accessory Dwelling Plan for 105 Hathaway Road, Situate, Mass. by Ross Engineering dated December 20th, 2017, and elevations and floor plans including drawings A3 first floor plan dated May 26, 2017, A1 first floor plan design one, A2 exterior elevation design one, and A3 exterior elevations design one dated December 21st, 2017. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to, one, in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application, the number of bedrooms in the primary dwelling is limited to four. Three, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and state bylaws. Four, stormwater runoff must be contained on-site during construction and after construction is completed. Five, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Six, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for recording at the registry of deeds.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a form A next up for 568 First Parish.
And by the way, while you exit, I just want to say thank you for so, it's very nicely documented. Sometimes we get just sketches, so these are beautifully done. Thank you.
Did he use the right CAD system?
Well, see, I'm not even going to ask that. But they are very detailed, which is nice to see.
Um, who do we have here for this form A?
Mr. Maravito was here for the form A.
You have a different hand to wear?
You can explain to us what this is all about.
Okay.
What is this one?
568 First Parish is the first, um, first one.
This is a, uh.
Where is this?
Uh, special permit lot with 50-foot frontage, which was entered to the zoning board of appeals last fall. They approved it of public hearing, the decision was written, signed, and approved, and filed with the town clerk and after the appeal period, it was recorded in the registry of deeds. You have a copy of that decision and the plan reflects the.
This is one of your favorite things, yeah?
Yeah.
Houses behind houses.
Houses behind houses are so exciting.
Um, it has access and frontage, the 50-foot frontage lot is all approved, so you can endorse it.
Is the?
It has double the uplet, it has double the lot area.
And is the zoning board decision final?
Yes, it is final.
You said it's here?
Um, I think I gave it to everybody. I mean, we got a copy of it, I mean, it's recorded already at the registry of deeds.
Were there any special conditions on that?
No, I mean, it's, it's like any other 50-foot frontage lot, it can't be re-subdivided.
What's with lot one? That's landlocked now?
Pardon?
Lot one?
Lot one?
No, lot one has 103 feet.
That's the existing house?
Oh, okay.
Lot one comes all the way down here.
Of course, the zoning decision.
It's showing all the three of them.
And what?
This is almost up to, um.
So this will also have the deed restriction put on it?
Yes, if you look at the last note on the plan, that reflects the decision of the zoning board.
Last note on?
Up top.
Number eight?
Oh, the deed for lot two shall state that lot two is subject to the special permit issued by the board of appeals on November 15th, 2017 pursuant to section 610 dot 2 dot B of the Situate zoning bylaw. That's what you're referring to?
That's it.
Shall state or does state?
Pardon?
Shall or does? Has this, has this deed been, restriction been recorded? I'm not sure I follow the.
No, the, no, the deed, that, that, that plan would be used by the convening attorney to sell lot two and then the deed to the buyer of lot two, they would have the deed restriction in there.
So it doesn't, yeah.
They don't have a deed for the lot yet because they haven't sold it. Once the deed is prepared, it's going to refer to this plan and this plan is not subject to the deed restriction.
Okay. So how does this, I'm sorry, I'm not great at the whole registry of deeds thing. How does this plan get recorded?
When it's recorded?
Yeah, is there a deed that goes along with it?
Yes, when we sell lot two, they're going to sell it with this plan.
Don't you have to record it before that?
What they'll do is to record the plan and the deed at the time of sale.
Okay.
And we, we still have, well, we'll have the bylaw and we'll give it to the attorney of the owner at the time of sale.
Okay. Any questions?
I had a, I had a question, um, I, obviously we're looking at the plan provided to us today by a professional land surveyor, but, um, I did just, I happened to watch the ZBA hearing and there was, um, one of the butters, I believe it was Montanari, but I couldn't.
Yes.
There was a question about the triangular piece of land ownership. Is there any?
He doesn't own it.
Okay.
He doesn't own it. The deeds are very clear.
Okay, so that's been further looked into.
Ben?
Lot one.
We have a motion?
I move to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts located at 568 First Parish Road, prepared by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated for applicant Martha Nugent, trustee of the Nugent Management Trust dated September 12th, 2017, as the division of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage on First Parish Road, a public way of the distance as required under the Situate zoning bylaw, and lot two has received a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for a 50-foot frontage lot.
Do you have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to form A for three driftway. Moving on to Form A for 3 Driftway. Who's up?
Mr. Mirabeau will present, right?
You have to have a different hand.
I don't blame you. CNN about 15 minutes.
Okay, can you testify yourself and tell us what you're proposing?
Counselor for Rob Griffin, he's the trustee of the 3 Driftway nominee trust. Mr. Griffin owns the property at 3 Driftway. And what we're proposing tonight to this Form A is basically reconfiguring the lot line on the norally part by reserving for the trust a very small sliver of land that you can see that runs, um, continuous with Driftway in that area comprised of 238 square feet and identified as parcel A, same for you. Uh, it's not a buildable parcel, and there is one particular reason why we're making this proposal. Um, the trust has owned the property for a little while and has marketed it for sale. Um, in fact, Michelle Leonard, who's the broker, my client is here tonight as well, and she can speak to her efforts in marketing the property for sale. As you can see by the location of the existing dwelling, it is currently a non-conforming lot. Um, when we purchased the property, my client purchased the property, the trust, um, they conducted an extensive, um, inspection of the actual building, and there's some significant structural defects in the property. As a result, we're concerned about its viability to a new owner and would presume that a new owner may consider a tear-down and a rebuild. In light of the fact that this is a lot that is technically considered a corner lot, the setback requirements being what they are, we ran into some questions regarding some of the questions that a potential builder may get from you folks on this property. By, by effectively placing a parcel along Driftway that retained, that is being retained by the trust, then arguably, a new owner could come before you and say the setback requirement is now a lesser restriction than was pre, would be previously imposed, and it would make potentially the process towards receiving a permit to build that much smoother. These are issues that were raised with Mrs. Leonard by a couple of potential buyers, and they were, they were presented as potential obstacles to the property. So we figured that this is one of the ways of ameliorating that particular issue, making the property more marketable. It has significant value given its location and given the unique nature of the property being on Third Cliff where it is, and it does not present any additional burdens on the community, on the environment, and on the nature of the particular land that's there. And what it does is, again, it makes it more marketable, in our opinion, for my client. And again, if any of you have any questions, I'm not putting you on the spot there. I've heard efforts that she's engaged in thus far in order to...
It's probably just an educational question, but I, I don't quite understand what the, what the concern is and why this solves that concern. Can you articulate that a little more?
Sure. So, looking how close the house sits to the corner?
Yep.
And the setbacks being what they are, as I said, changing that sideline, so to speak, on the Driftway to now be abutting another property, then make it a side lot line and require a big hook setback where the house would then be contorting in that area instead of having to be 30 feet within 30 feet with the other setbacks from the top of the cliff, then you've got basically nothing to do.
Exactly.
The foundation right now, some of the pilings underneath the house are significantly disturbed, so there's a lot of sloping that comes on in the house. So someone really has to have a creative mind to think of all those fixes that are already, but we had to, the contractor come over as well and say, well, you can move it off the property, off the foundation, dig a foundation, move it back, but, you know, they're still gonna run into some...
So this is an effort to have a, a non-conforming lot, less non-conforming, yet a variance?
Correct. Or a special permit.
Or a special permit.
And ultimately, it comes down to, if it was still a corner lot, you said it was a 30-foot setback?
30...
Yes. East Street, whereas now it would be a 8-foot setback.
Now it's a corner lot.
From that side.
So, yeah, it makes a big...
The front's still 20, so it's still not conforming.
30 feet from the whole side.
It is, no, it is, oh, correct, correct.
If a new place, a new house would have to be 20 foot back, but...
8 foot on the side.
8 foot on the side, whereas if you left it a corner lot, it would also have to be 30. 30 feet.
Exactly. And given the size of the lot, and you can see it's kind of unusual character, it's not a rectangular lot, we don't have an opportunity just to kind of move it around if we're gonna build a new house there, right? So, not us, but any potential buyer. So this, this just ameliorates that one concern that a buyer may have, and it does make it less non-conforming.
What's the side setback?
Excuse me?
8 feet.
8.
Okay, and this is 9 and 2. So now it's conforming?
Now it's conforming.
Right.
With a new lot line.
If it's a corner lot, it's non-conforming. I agree. Right? So this is sort of a way to create the, the impression that it's less non-conforming?
In legal, it would be non-conforming.
Yeah, legal?
Yeah, it would be.
Nothing really changed.
It would be one less hoop for potential builder to come, to jump through. And we know that it is, you're right, it is currently non-conforming, but it makes it less non-conforming, and that's, that's our goal in doing this.
What I found fascinating when I went up and looked at this, on one side of the Driftway is a broad iron fence, and then on the other side, your client's property or whatever, is this huge, um, evergreen hedge.
Yeah, it's, it's a hedge.
It's a hedge. And the Driftway portion has been turned into a driveway that's, it has been cobbled and gravelled when in fact it's a public way all the way to the end, but there's a bench, so nobody can use it other than who's there.
Well, for, for your edification, that's the condition, except for the hedge, that's the condition the property was in when we bought it. We didn't create that.
Somebody claimed it earlier.
I, I will represent to you, based on what we've been told by Mr. Mr. Genowitz, the previous trustee, it's been like that for over 30 years.
Want any doubts?
Yeah, I mean, I would have never known that Driftway actually went all the way up the cliff.
It's neat because the, the open houses that I've done, many of the neighbors have come, and they're all very well aware that it's a public way, and they can walk there, and they're educating anyone else that comes to the open houses. And the hedge, I mean, it's really sort of navy trees, more as a, um, a picture for those, a visual for those coming, that that's the lot line. It's hard for buyers to see, you know, picture this right over here, so, so the, Mr. Griffin just sort of claimed it.
It outlines it for...
Just to, you know, just to see this is where it would be, essentially.
So, Mr. Griffin owns this property right now?
Well, the trust does. He's the trustee of 3 Driftway nominee trust.
And then he also owns the property on the other side?
Correct. Correct, with the big house.
With the big house.
Correct, yeah.
Karen?
Um, Driftway is a public way down to the cliff, is listed in the street, the approved streetway enlisting, so it is a public way. They are using a public property as private property. Um, that's an established fact, but there can be, they, it cannot be claimed as, um, it cannot be claimed.
We're not proposing to address that all.
No, we're not, no, right, I'm just giving you a little background, so...
Okay.
Um, I've met with the building inspectors on this, and, um, we kinda, we all kind of scratched our heads on this, but, um, it still maintains access and frontage along Collier, so theoretically, the planning board can endorse this plan. It may not achieve all that the applicant thinks it's achieving, um, but that's, um, you always put the stamp, um, planning board endorsement is not conformance with zoning stan, standards, so that, um, that covers it.
Conformance issue, and a special permit has to be taken up with the...
That, that's right, but it has access and it has frontage, so therefore, I think legally, the board needs to endorse the plan.
They can't undo it.
What?
I said, once it's done, they can't undo it, because that'll make it more non-conforming.
Well, we had a discussion that it already makes it more non-conforming, so, um, it may not meet all the purposes that the applicant thinks, so...
Is it more non-conforming?
Well, the building department was thinking it's making it more non-conforming by, you know, changing the, uh, changing the lot size and changing, um, the setback. The house is already pre-existing non-conforming in, in the setbacks, so, um, they just opined that...
Notion that they change it from a corner lot to a, a parcel doesn't change the, the zoning requirements?
No, it would, it would change it to a side setback, but, I mean, they opined that it may just make it more non-conforming.
Less, no?
I would say less.
They'll find more, but it's not, it's not our issue. I mean, our issue is access and...
That's all. I'm just interested. It seems like it would make it less non-conforming if you apply the standard of an interior lot, right?
Well, I mean, they're...
The side lot would then conform, and only the front would not conform.
Right. I mean, they could still go and get a Section 6 finding from, from ZBA. Up to the ZBA.
Okay, we have a motion?
I move to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land in Situate, Massachusetts located at 3 Driftway, prepared by New England Land Survey Incorporated for applicant Robert E. Griffin, Jr., trustee of the 3 Driftway nominee trust, dated January 8th, 2018. As the division of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision, it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw as there is adequate frontage and access from Collier Road. Parcel A is labeled as a non-buildable parcel. The board will add the stamp that planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations.
Do you have a second?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set?
Thank you, sir.
Ingenious way to try to...
I know.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause at first I was like, what is going on, but now it makes sense.
Sort of.
Is that in the right direction?
It makes no... Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay. We have the county, we have the county to do?
Yep.
I move to approve the requisition of $6,452.27 to Horsley Witten Group for engineering peer review for Seaside at Situate, Toll Brothers, for $489 to Chesia Consulting Services, LLC for construction inspections for 50 Country Way, and for $160 to the Association of State Flood Plane Managers for renewal of membership for Nancy Durfee, and for $141.23 to J. and R. Graphics for office supplies.
Do you have a second? Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about minutes? I think we're actually gonna get to some minutes tonight.
We have a couple seconds.
I move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for a meeting held on January
11th, 2018.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I...
I'm abstaining, I wasn't there.
And move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for August 10th, 2017.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The ASOM reports.
Economic development went before the selectmen, well, with Brad Washburn concerning the Drew Company. A letter has been sent. Once they can figure out where we're going and how we're gonna get there as far as the septic is concerned, you know that you are...
Septic.
The septic issue.
They're gonna put it in separate?
No, tying into the sewer.
Into the sewer.
Okay, sorry, I misspoke. At any rate, you know that there's a regional...
Yeah.
Movement, and so this discussion with all of that, the selectmen were very receptive to the Drew Company and really hope that we can all somehow, they can make it work.
I would like to put a stake in the ground here. Sewer capacity study, the water capacity study, the big study, I think we should have that to inform this decision.
Which decision?
Whatever decision comes in on Drew, if Drew's gonna file something...
I understand, the sewer report is due in mid-February, the big one.
The, the regional sewer report is...
That's not the one...
No, I, I understand that's not the one you're talking about. The Drew Company has been made aware of the status of the sewer in Norwell, I mean, Situate here, and they, they're on, they understand what's going on, they understand there's going to be a big study, and, um, they, they understand everything.
Sewer and water?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They've been informed of this right up front, yes.
That's one I want to see before we make a decision.
Yes, I understand.
But they haven't filed anything yet.
No, this just enables them to come, the time clock with the MBTA was running out, so it enables, you know, them to extend their time with the MBTA or whatever they needed to do with the MBTA, so they, they haven't even purchased the land yet.
They have a PNS.
Okay. So what enables them to do that?
Well, the support letter from the town that they will support, they're gonna support the project, tying into sewer.
Really? Without knowing whether we have the capacity or not? Or is the support letter contingent upon available capacity?
Have, I, I can give you a copy of the support letter.
I'd like to see it.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like we're heading down the same road.
Um, I don't think so.
I don't either.
Well, then...
They've been approached about, they've been approached about providing funding for the study. They've been approached about providing funding for the study, too.
Who has?
The Drew Company.
Okay.
So that's why I'm pretty confident that they, they know what's, they've been told exactly what's going on.
Right.
So I think you're, you know, I think you'll get your answers.
Okay. Anything?
CPC, we're looking into, and voted $8,500 to do an appraisal on, I guess you would call it the old either McDonald Dority property, which if you're sitting at the Millworth and you look across the harbor, it's about four plus acres, it's the end of Sunset. Uh, it's on the market, and the thought is, with the appraisal, whatever comes in at, it is probably well worth our buying.
This is the, kind of the point right there that you look at?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Where the Coast Guard station is, or what?
Well, it's sort of kind of behind on the side.
It's sort of a bussit almost, right? It's that closer version of the piece that you can see sitting at the Millworth, right, where the tide goes down?
Yeah, well, see, when the tide goes down, it's really low there.
Right. And what else? Once upon a time, it was farmed, there's probably not enough land there other than a very, very small house. NOAA was the group that approached CPC with the potential of purchasing it. If we do purchase it, they will be instrumental in putting in boardwalks and what have you. It will connect with the Maritime Center and that whole idea of a harbor walk.
Is it gonna go all the way out to Stella Lake Center?
Yes.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
So, I mean, of course, there was a little bit of mm-hmm back and forth, but, um, as I said, it would be nice to purchase some open space east of 3A because we haven't, really.
Now, I'm confused what you just said. I thought you said NOAA wanted to purchase it.
No, NOAA approached CPC with, with CPC purchasing it, and then NOAA would...
Develop the infrastructure.
Okay, got it, understand, sorry.
That, that list come before CPC a couple of times.
Now it's down to under a million.
It started out at like $4 million.
Holy cow.
So now it's down under a million, 900 and something. So it's going to be appraised, all of this has to be done within a certain period of time so that it can be on the warrant for April. time so that it can be on the warrant for April.
Okay. And that's what they're shooting for?
Yes. I think it's a really good purchase if we can do it. And if it, it's possible, it's, when you look at this parcel, to the, as you're looking at it, to the right of it is more land, marshland and what have you. Nobody knows who owns that. Nobody's paid taxes on it forever, so I guess it belongs to the town. But it really would be a wonderful piece for us to own.
As long as you don't put too much infrastructure on it.
It fits in, and they're putting a board, talking about putting a boardwalk, bringing it down past, down to the Gulf Coast Air Station and up.
That'd be great.
I mean, that'd be a beautiful thing.
Yes, it would be.
Thinking if they put floats on it when the tide comes up?
Well, that's what Vignani said, it'll be in five years.
Signage.
Lots of signage.
If the water appears to be rising, get the hell out.
It's just like a dock.
Yeah, seriously. But at any rate, he doesn't understand why we want it, because it'll be underwater in five years. Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
No, that's probably true.
But if the appraisal comes in at X amount of dollars and it's presented to the trustees, if they feel that it's too low, they don't want, because we can't purchase it for any more than the appraisal, and they walk, fine. Well, what was the Coast Guard station though? NOAA. NOAA knows it.
Okay.
Went to traffic rules and regulations, between me and my memo, or my motion, but I went to traffic rules, and they came back up and they, one of the items that they were looking at first was the parking down at the brewery.
Yeah, that's tough down.
It's a concern.
I didn't ever anticipate it would be like that, but...
It's that popular.
No, it's a good thing.
It's a nice place.
But they basically, they took it under advisement, they're going to bring it back at their next, their next meeting, right?
Yep.
And then on it, and then Brad and Karen were there and they indicated that it'd be worth the, worth their effort to work with, with planning, so that we could coordinate with what the thinking is and with other demands going to be in that area.
Do they have an idea of how to solve it?
Basically, one way, they created one way coming off Old Country Way to Country Way.
One way going in or coming out?
Well, they're going to look at it both ways, but I think coming out was a concern that they...
I could have it going in, and then...
Then you would circle around?
Yep.
Yeah.
To Country Way?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pulling out plans this afternoon. They were pulling out plans this afternoon.
Just gravel.
But the concern that they had was the ability to make left and right turns coming off of that triangle.
Yeah, it's difficult.
So that's basically...
So they should go in the other way.
They're going to bring that discussion at the next meeting. We talked about Humrock. It's an interesting discussion on Humrock. No decisions are going to bring that back prior to our hearing.
This is about the restaurant?
The restaurant.
Yeah.
They're the same concerns that we have in terms of parking, pedestrian access. We've asked them to look at that.
Plus, it's for sale. It almost went under agreement several months ago.
Oh, really?
Yes, but it fell through.
The place he wants to put the restaurant?
Yeah. It's all very interesting.
Makes it worth more if it's got a potential restaurant.
Yeah, it holds three people.
It's not a liaison report, but since you brought up the brewery, I noticed I drove by there just a day or two days ago, and they're doing, they're taking off the siding on Union Street, so I'm assuming maybe they're prepping it for the construction?
Howlett's property.
Preconstruction meeting is on next Wednesday.
Just an update.
And I was at Capitol last night, because I go to all those meetings, and you people are on for February 28th for the master plan, 21.
February 28th?
March 20, yeah, I think it's February 28th.
I think it's February 28th for the Capitol.
For the Capitol.
Yeah.
To present the master plan, how much money you want.
And actually...
Should we put that on the calendar, or should we be there?
You have to be there, some of it.
Brad will be there at least. But, yeah, we have that coming up. We have February 22nd is going to be the zoning public hearing. We, the town report will go in as written. I sent a letter commenting on two things on Lawson Green. That 40B hearing started, was starting tonight, and the second, Herringbrook 40B was tonight, too. 50 Country Way got continued with the selectmen again on the sewer on Tuesday night.
Have they stopped working? It seems like it's been in that sort of unsided condition for a while.
No, I think they've been adding the siding a little bit.
I don't see any siding.
Well, right now, they have plans in for building permit for Building A, and so I need to sit down with Bob. I've given Bob the vote that you voted, and so Bob and I need to talk about that before we sign off on the building permit. Things are, I think, just...
It's a reproduction of...
That's what, I gave him, right, I haven't looked, I haven't had time to look at the building, but I gave him all the conditions that it's supposed to be, and so I need to refresh myself exactly with what was voted. They intend to be using plastic materials, you know, and that kind of stuff, so I'm just not, I haven't, I had to look.
I think we're pretty particular about that.
I think you are pretty particular, so I have to look at that. But construction slowed down. They did get the binder in in December, but we still don't have, this is last time I knew, the emergency access in the back wasn't connected. Obviously, the sewer and water aren't connected, and we don't have anything with the affordable units yet either, so I think we're looking at a little bit away. 10 new Driftway, I wrote a letter saying that they have a notice of intent to add about 15 to 20 new parking spots, and I had to, I wrote them a letter saying they really have to apply to, for site plan review.
Where's 10 new Driftway?
That's the Jacob Hatch building. They had a, they had a special permit from, from years ago, and, you know, so I informed an applicant last week who was trying to file a Form A without his 50-foot frontage special permit, that we weren't taking them anymore, that we wanted, we wanted the actual document on that. And I'll be meeting this week with Jeff Delisi to start the 90 and Lionel findings of facts and conditions. But that one, that one may be delayed. Our next meeting on that is February 8. They have not filed, Conservation Commission told them they need to file a notice of intent. So we may get so far on February 8, but want a continuance, because you probably don't want to close without hearing what Conservation has to say.
Okay.
So...
Anything else?
No.
I note that you sent around the town planner report, so if anybody had any comments, I'll just hand it back to Karen.
I was just, is there a limit to the number of words? I was thinking there must be, right? It just seemed very condensed.
Well, it's going to be different this year, because it's all going to go under Department of Planning and Development, so they're, I think they're, we're trying to condense them a little bit more so that there can be a general planning and development write-up as well.
Okay.
All the departments in planning and development will be together.
We'll roll up under that.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Yeah, I think, it seemed good. The only comment I had was that it seemed short. I'm like, no, we did a lot more.
Anything else? I'm entertaining Bill's motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.